Will the aldermen please take their seats? Want to get this meeting started on time? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the 2025-2026 Board of Aldermen Budget Deliberations. Today is Wednesday, April 16th, 2025. We are continuing with the department presentation portion of the 2025-2026 automatic budget process. Will everyone please stand up and join me as we pledge allegiance and salute our flag? Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Arquillo. Alderman Beatty. Alderman Bevan.
Here.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Federico. Alderman Fowler.
Here.
Alderman Healy. Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman Marlowe.
Here.
Alderman Mo Brennan.
Here.
Alderman Paselli.
Alderman Paselli would like to be excused, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith. Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitro. Alderman Willis.
Here.
Eleven are present.
Eleven present. We do have a quorum. Is there a motion to come out of recess?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to come out of recess. All in favor? Oppose? We are out of recess. This evening, we will be hearing from the Board of Education, as the Board of Education have a presentation. I see that they do. Page 94, Superintendent Dr. Kutaia, take it away.
Good evening, Mr. Vitro, members of the Board of Aldermen. Thank you so much for the opportunity to meet with you this evening to discuss our Board of Education proposed operations budget for 2025-2026. So I appreciate that we can sit together this evening to discuss the needs of our young people and how our budget supports those needs in its totality. As I think I've explained before, the elected Board of Education begins its formal budget work in the fall, when we review and adopt budget assumptions and priorities that help guide the superintendent in the development of her budget. She delivers her proposal to us in early January, publicly presents it to us about a week later, and then Board members discuss it with her during a series of public budget workshops before adopting our final plan. So before this point, we've spent maybe some 20 public meetings throughout the year discussing district needs and initiatives, giving feedback on future plans that might have budget impact, and reviewing current monthly and quarterly budget reports. So there are no surprises for us in January, when the superintendent presents her proposal. This year, Dr. Kutaia presented to the Board a budget that with intention contains no new initiatives and, to be honest, is really nothing terribly exciting. You have before you a maintenance budget that honors our priorities and commitments to our students and staff and funds the services we currently provide, reflecting rising costs due to contractual salary increases, increased operational costs, renewal of contracts at a higher rate than last year, increased utilities mandates and things like that. To mitigate these increases, administration identified $645,000 in savings over the current year, and we minimized buildings and grounds maintenance projects to only the essentials in deference to our long-range facilities planning work. So this is the third year that our budget has sustained a $1 million-plus reduction to our request. Two years ago, in 2023, a $1.8 million reduction was mostly reinstated by the Board, by this Board. Last year, a $1.3 million reduction was not reinstated, and we largely offset that by eliminating about $775,000 in buildings and grounds maintenance. We can't do that again this year to fill this current gap, which again sits at nearly $1.3 million, because those lines have already been gutted. So we fast forward to the long-range facilities planning work that the Board is currently engaged in at your collective request. Through the work we've done to date, we know we have old buildings that don't necessarily support the needs of modern-day teaching and learning. We've seen an engaged community who generally understands the potential need to consolidate if it's done with planning and intention. We've heard parents want parity among schools and that they'd like to see more opportunities for kids. They want innovation and relevance, which we've delivered on: elementary world language, STEM starting at early ages, career exploration, and real-world application, all things that have gratefully been supported by past budgets and now standing question. We are responsible for the current and future needs of all of the young people that we serve, who range in age from three years to 22 years old. That's a lengthy span. If we want an efficient, forward-thinking school system that is prepared to provide relevant 21st century opportunities for all kids, then we must address the physical infrastructure of the system, and that takes time. A $1.3 million reduction to a budget that is already lean interrupts this process because it forces us to set aside thoughtful and intentional long-term planning. It forces us to seriously consider dismantling programs which you have supported in the past and which contribute to the progress we are seeing. To be crystal clear, this budget, which we adopted, reflects what we need to simply move forward, what's already in place, systems and programs implemented by two very capable instructional leaders over the past 14 or so years, Dr. Fieser and Dr. Kutaia. I think we can all agree, a great school system benefits everyone: our young people, our businesses, and the community at large. It's my hope that we can collectively continue to send the message that Milford values education by supporting our progress and commitments and allowing the Board the time to plan, which you requested that we do. Dr. Kutaia will now share details of the budget with you, and then we can take questions. And I encourage you, as always, in the coming days to reach back out to us if need be. So thank you again for your attention tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. Thank you, members of the Board of Aldermen. I always look forward to this evening every year. I get this opportunity to brag a little bit about our school district. I get to really highlight what our young people are doing, talk about the incredible work of our staff, and express my gratitude to this Board as well as the community in Milford who continue to support us to do great things for young people. It also gives me an opportunity to talk to you about our hopes and dreams for the future and what the resources are that are needed to get those things done. So this evening, I plan to do just that and look forward to taking any questions you may have. I also, in this presentation, baked in some answers to, I think, questions that have been floating around. The nice thing about presenting in January and now being before you in April, we get an entire community get to talk about our budget for four months. And while there may not have been these questions and answers back in January, I get the great opportunity to answer them this evening for you here in April. So let's get started with the presentation, okay? In case you're wondering, this is, uh, these are some pictures of our young people from the very youngest of three- and four-year-olds to our middle schoolers and to our transition program that exists at Parsons. Our budget, the proposed budget before you, is a, actually a plan. A plan on how we hope to attain the goals that the Board of Education adopted in 2021 that expire in 2026. These goals are a direct reflection of the vision of the learner, goals that point to the scholarship, personal development, citizenship, and creativity and innovation we want for every young person. I will not read these next few slides, word by word, because they're quite lengthy. The Board of Education, at the same time, also adopted nine commitments. Commitment statements that say, "These are the things that are important to us." These statements is what drives all of our decisions and including that of budgeting. Annually, our Board of Education identifies and adopts budget assumptions, sorry, budget priorities. Priorities that drive and direct the administration, our team, in developing a budget. Again, I won't read all of these to you, but please know that the basic foundations of a core instructional program, instructional practices, assessment, the wellness and development of our young people are all embedded in these priorities. And you'll find those throughout the budget. We also take time, back in October, when these are adopted, to forecast or predict, if you will, what we believe the economic climate would look like and what challenges we might be facing in the world of budgeting for the 25-26 school year. So you'll note some of these challenges or assumptions that we identified. And just like you and your own personal businesses and homes, we're facing the cost of goods and services rising, schools facing expenses that are increasing in the forms of textbook supplies, paper, energy costs, and utilities. We also see the distinguishing of some funds that are available through us, to us, through ARP and ESAR, which are no longer available, and other grants that might be expiring. We have other impacts that, while I won't read exactly throughout, I will touch upon throughout my presentation later when I talk about our primary drivers and what those impacts were on this particular budget. Okay. In my opinion, this is the best part of the presentation, so pay attention. I want to highlight a little bit, as I annually do with you, our accomplishments and our progress made. I know there was a lot of, actually, conversation about this last year at this Board, and I get the pleasure of working with our Board of Education to talk about this, actually, quite monthly. And what I am happy to share with you through the hard work and the investment that we've made in our school system, that we're seeing progress being made. I will tell you, being an educator for 33 years today, teaching and learning today is so, so different to even as recent as just pre-pandemic days. And in all of our research and all the work that I do in my superintendent world, we are still talking about getting back to pre-pandemic achievement levels. That is still a topic of our conversation, and here we are, five, six years later. I'm happy to share with you, as I have with our Board of Education, that we are headed back there. We're making progress. We've seen a 6% increase in students demonstrating college and career readiness on AP exams. And please know that these are all external measures. These are not things that we administer. These are state and/or federal. In the world of AP, we have 174 students named as AP scholars. That's an increase of 34 students from 2023. I have a slide that will go into that a little bit more. In the world of physical fitness, yes, there actually is an assessment on physical fitness required by the state. And I'll tell you, physical fitness achievement is really hard to get at with young people today because they are much more sedentary than they ever were before. But here in Milford, we saw an 8% increase in that physical fitness attainment of goal. We also saw an increase of 7.5% in the world of reading and writing, or otherwise known as ELA growth for all students. For the fourth year in a row, we have been named the best, um, and Milford Public Schools has been named Best Community for Music Education, and that is a nationally-recognized award. And in the area mathematics, we've seen across all grade levels and across, for all students, a 5.7% growth. So we are headed back to pre-pandemic achievement. We are investing a lot in our young people and our staff. And in fact, this next slide, let me just take a moment to explain. And I'm trying to break this down in just like really simple terms. In our world, we talk about growth targets. So when you think about achievement, you think about, okay, all third graders, 90% of them should be at a grade level in reading this, and you either make it or you don't. Well, the state has developed their accountability system much greater than that. It's not a, did a child make it or not. Every child, based on their performance, is given a personalized growth target. So for every child, we have how much growth we want that child to make. And the State Department gives us feedback on whether that child made that growth or did not, whether they hit the performance target for all third graders, let's say. That one child had a growth target. Well, I'm happy to say that in 2023-24, Milford Public Schools saw increases in students meeting their personal growth targets in 10 out of 12 areas, in grades three through eight for ELA and math. So at 12 areas, we, our students hit targets in 10 of those areas. That's pretty significant when we're talking about pre-pandemic achievement. So let's keep bragging, okay? This year, based on performance of 2023-24, I just want you to know that we haven't taken our 25 assessment yet. 24-25 assessment is taken late April, early May, so we don't have this year's achievement results. We have those of students that performed in May. Based on the 2023-24 achievement, Orange Avenue Elementary and Pumpkin Delight Elementary have been identified by the state as schools of distinction. You should be applauding in your head if you aren't with your physical hands, but that is a major, major accomplishment and well-deserved there. So for the class of 2024, we were happy to graduate 402 graduates, and 160 of those graduates left us with honors. And that includes cum laude, magna cum laude, and summa cum laude. And you'll see the breakdown of the post-secondary plans for those graduates. Okay, I told you we were going to dig a little bit deeper into AP scores. AP, National Board, National College Board identifies those students who are AP scholars. So if you take an AP test, great. We encourage any student to take an AP course that is college-level learning, and we ask students to take that exam at the end. And if you perform at a certain level, three being passing out of a scale of one to five, you get recognized as an AP scholar. If you get 3.25, you're an AP scholar with honors. And if you're an AP scholar with distinction, it means that you scored a 3.5 or higher. Because we are an open-opportunity AP course school district, sometimes the performance on assessments don't mirror our goal because we just want any student to take it. We're not going to require you have to hit a certain GPA. I'm happy to say that here today in 2024, based on our AP results, we have not only gotten back to pre-pandemic performance, but we are slightly higher than pre-pandemic performance on AP scores. And I know that you're clapping in your head for us. I do. I know that. Okay. Super proud of our young people and super proud of our teachers. That doesn't happen without adults investing in young people. Okay, let's talk about something equally as important, but not as exciting. Just kidding. Our long-range facilities plan. So we heard loud and clear from you that we need a plan. Okay, we got the message. And so here is a timeline. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because it is kind of sort of related to this, but not exactly. So in the fall of 2023, and I think that is the fall following, Mayor, I remember you standing over there and sitting in that area that night, and there was some back and forth. I think we were faced with a $1.8 million reduction. And it was a good display of this Board working together, and you said, "But we need a plan." Or you said, "We need a plan," okay? And so we got right to work, and we engaged. We knew we needed information in order to do that. So we engaged in a facilities capacity utilization study, enrollment projection study. Then, that June, we presented to the Board from our departments what we thought the next five years in the world of education could look like. So that's a programmatic piece of information. Then that summer, we brought in a partner called Bureau Veritas. They conducted a conditions assessment, like, what condition are your buildings in? You know, like, the experts that look at buildings, not educators, but like engineers. And that information was shared with the Board. And then, starting at the beginning of this school year, the Board started engaging our community and asking, "What do you think about this data? What do you think we should do with our facilities?" And some of you, thank you for attending our community conversations, and we've engaged our folks, our community, throughout the process. And Ms. Glennon just announced Monday evening that we're actually just hitting pause on that process for right now. We're hoping that the Board would have adopted, at least conceptually, how they wanted to move forward by like April-May. You noticed that that was the date there. We're looking forward to putting this part of the budget process to bed in May, at which time I believe the Board hopes to resume this planning process again. So we know that there is a high-level sense of urgency, and as Ms. Glennon also already mentioned, our community is very, very interested in engaging in this process and coming up with a plan with us. So more to come, okay? Okay, I want to, um, I want to invite you into this dialogue. I know you'll have questions about this, so I'm going to present this information to you and want to talk to you about, I struggle to talk about like what to name this, but I want to talk to you about the organizational framework of a school district. Because many of you are not in educational organizations and may not be familiar on how we organize our work and why we organize our work the way we do. So I wanted to take liberty, since this organizational chart is already floating around the community, I wanted to take an opportunity to go ahead and just, let's go ahead and talk about the org chart. And let's talk about who works there in the school system and what they do. And I thought that would be beneficial for us this evening. And you've probably already seen this org chart. We're running about 5,200 students at this time. We have 14 school buildings. We have about 1,200 employees, 590 teachers, over a million square feet of facilities. So I'm just trying to give you a sense of the scope of the work, okay? And we have, what I like to call is two sides of our organization. We have an operations and finance side, and we have an instructional side. And we have, the operations and financial side is primarily overseen by Mr. Brennan. We also have two other key pillars in that side, and actually, one of them straddles both the business and instructional digital services side, part of that side. And then, if you take a look, talent management and development actually straddles both the instructional side and the operational side. But for technicalities, when you take a look at organizational theory, HR usually is on the operations side, okay? Those are the individuals that, by organizational chart, help run the system. So what are the systems on this side of the organization? Let's take a look. Like I already said, they help, quote-unquote, "manage" 1,200 employees. They help, quote-unquote, "manage" 1.1 million, oh, million, I said thousand. It was, that's a lot bigger, million feet of building space, 179 acres of grounds upkeep. There are officially 491 learning spaces. So I call them classrooms, but those are like full-size classrooms. There are other spaces that are not included in that, like maybe a social worker's class office, school psychologist, school counselor, et cetera. But as far as classrooms are concerned, we have 491 of those. We actually transport every single day almost 3,700 kids, every day. And on how many buses, Mr. Brennan, like? About 70 buses are running every day, transporting 3,700 kids. Every year, we serve a lot of meals. Our kiddos like to eat. We like to feed them. In 2023-24, we served almost 700,000 meals. I'll just round that up. And we have, we run 24 sports in our school system, and we have about 1,356 athletes. On the left side of this, sorry, the right side of this slide, you will see just various forms of functions that are overseen by those individuals on this chart, as I just showed you. So those individuals, through those three departments primarily, oversee all these functions at that scope. So that is what we would refer to as the operational and financial side of the organization. Now let's move to the instructional side for a minute. The instructional side of the organization is led by our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. And there's another key pillar on that side of the organization, and that is the People Personnel Services, or you may also know it better as Special Education. And that, and they oversee, I'll go into the next slide in a moment, all the curriculum instruction and assessment for almost 5,200 kiddos. We also, we also just mentioned that there are 590 teachers. They're responsible for the capacity building and creating systems and structures for those individuals that continue to learn themselves. So I know a point of conversation has been, "What does an instructional supervisor do all day? They just sit around in an office," quote-unquote. Well, false. Instructional supervisors, as listed here, the seven of them have primary areas of impact of curriculum, instruction, assessment, professional learning, and the organizing, maintaining, and developing of data systems. The two circles demonstrate, the above is how professional learning is based on instructional quality strategies and the vision of the learner. And then the green one talks about how we have a professional learning system that is nested. But more importantly is the right side of this slide, where these seven individuals, they help manage, they facilitate a little over 300 unique curricular offerings throughout our school system. Across 14 schools for 5,200 students and 590 teachers, these seven individuals oversee, help facilitate the development of a little over 300 curricular areas. They also help facilitate about 129, 29, 123 local and state assessments. And they help develop, create systems and structures to continue to grow about 590 teachers across 14 schools. So you can imagine, that's not office work. That is face-to-face, shoulder-to-shoulder, feet-on-the-ground-in-14-buildings work. So why do you need, then, leaders or managers to do that kind of work in an educational system? That this is an, this is an organization with goals, as I mentioned to you earlier in the first two or three slides, for personal development, scholarship, citizenship, and innovation for all? Well, I just pulled very quickly, and I'm not going to go into a master's level Well, I just pulled very quickly, and I'm not going to go into a master's level course on this, albeit we could if you want. But there's some research done by Glasgov, and he talks about the degrees of an organization. And that you need people in an organization to work toward coherence. Otherwise, you have an organization disorganization. And if you have things that look like they can fit together, then that means your organization is consistent. And if you have things that fit together and they actually work together, that gets you to cohesiveness. But this board was loud and clear upon my hire, and based on a study that was done by a third-party consultant prior to my coming, that one thing that Milford Public Schools lacked was coherence. That all the pieces were here, but they weren't working together toward a common goal. And what those individuals that I just talked about in the teaching and learning side and the operational-financial side, they put all the pieces so that we can work toward a common goal for young people, as identified by the Board of Ed. And that gets us to coherence for all kiddos, from the age of 3 to 22. So to create a parallel for you, I was thinking that the closest organization in the city of Milford or any municipality actually is the city of Milford. That the city of Milford has a leadership and organizational structure too. And why didn't I think of this before now? That we're not the only ones that have departments. The city of Milford has departments. The city of Milford has department heads. They have varying levels of leadership, actually, based on experience and degrees and awards and accolades. So like the city of Milford, we, Board of Ed, Milford Public Schools, we also have a leadership structure. And I think actually the city has about 1,200 employees, maybe. That's the number I was given. What a coincidence. We have about 1,200 employees too. And I did a little bit of research because I think there's some conversation on how much money the central office costs the city of Milford and how top-heavy it is. And I haven't been in a community that that conversation doesn't come up. I just feel like it's a conversation that constantly comes up. And I did a little research, so these are not my stats. The national average data from the U.S. Department of Education, National Center for Educational Statistics, indicates that in the 1920s school year, approximately 6.7% of the school district's budgets were related to administration at both the district and school levels. This percentage has remained relatively stable over the past two decades. Central office for school site leadership. Research suggests that central office expenditures typically range from 6% to 20% of the total budget, while school site administration costs are generally between 4.5% to 6%. And in conclusion, while there isn't a single correct percentage, data suggests that typical spending on administration, both central and school level, is often in the range of 6% to 12% of the total school district budget. The central administration and other leaders, I think there is, I know there are charts that were requested of us at the Board of Finance level on include principals and assistant principals, don't include them, include central office, include the operational side, include... So there are a couple of charts out there that have same salaries, but just different people on the charts. Well, if you take a look at leaders at the school level and the central office level, and you add up those salaries, we come in at 6.03% of our budget, right in line with the national average. There's been a lot of talk about the academy. And it hurts my heart a little bit that we continue to talk about the academy because if there's ever a time to be staunch supporters and champions of a place like the academy, it would be today. Today, like as in these times, not today, like April 16. And this is a place where a lot of students find a home and a place where success is found. And I'm sorry for the misunderstanding. I think the number that's running around there is that there are only 17 kids at the academy. That, I want to go on record to say, is false. In fact, we did an enrollment and attendance analysis over the last 10 years, and you have that on a slide in your packet. And I just want to underscore that this enrollment fluctuates intentionally, right? So a child may not need to go to the academy on the very first day of school. They could enroll later in the school year. But the academy as a facility actually functions not just for, as an alternative high school program, as you'll see at the bottom of this, but also as a place for students to go for credit recovery. So that would mean that you're not necessarily a full-time student there, that you're just, you know, hop in for some credit recovery. And some students who are on expulsion, when a child's expelled, we actually still have the responsibility to provide an education. So I don't know if that's a understanding out there. But, and we do that primarily of some tutorial services where students go to the academy to receive that. And then some specialized programming in the world of special education and transition. So those are the numbers, total number of students right here on the right column identifies or represents kids that may be in and out for one of those reasons at the bottom. And a student that starts at the academy at the beginning of the year or November may not necessarily finish at the academy. Our goal really is for the child to finish schooling wherever they so choose, whether it's at the academy or if they want to go back to law or foreign. Okay, let's talk a little bit about student supports. And I do recollect last year, we had a lot of conversations on what are the supports available to students? What's the role of the instructional coach? Why the moving away from intervention? So I actually wanted to provide you with some good news tonight, like a little mini-update. And I want to thank the feedback. I thank you and others in our community for the feedback that we received on our coaching model. It made us think that we weren't being clear at all on it. And so if there are so many people who are not understanding, then the first thing I do is look in the mirror and say, "So how can we better be clear? How can we be more clear on that?" So what we did after our budget process, we really did some reflecting. And what we did was we officially adopted a student-centered coaching model developed by researcher and expert Diane Sweeney. And this is a model that's been adopted by many other districts in other states in the nation. And it really puts the focus on the adults being in service to the student. And it's a data-based approach to personalizing instructional practice to support kids and keeping track of where kids are when we start working with them and as the year progresses. And if you'll note, there are seven core practices there. And one actually explicitly states instructional services provided to kids. Now, there are a couple of things I want to mention. In our finding our identity with the coaching model, we did a couple of things. Not only did we identify this coaching model in adoption in eight schools, but we also carved out in elementary schedules exact times when push-in small-group support was going to happen at each grade level. So there was no question in anyone's mind when these instructional supports were being delivered. And they're done with students, side-by-side with teachers, and that data's looked at, a plan is developed, and kids are supported. And I'll tell you, we're seeing the results of that. I will also say that, just as a reminder, we didn't actually add coaches as additional FTEs. When we went to the coaching model, when I first got here, the model was two coaches and for most schools, two interventionists. So those four FTEs, and there was a school or two that actually had a third interventionist or .5. So we'll just say two and two. So those FTEs, those adults, were already in buildings. Two coaches, two interventionists. And those interventionists only provided reading intervention, not math. So we decided to take those four FTEs, budget-neutral decision, no budget impact, and go to a coaching model. And we talked so much about that, but this is officially our coaching model. But good news. Just in March, a national research organization published that they have found two states in our nation that have gotten back to pre-pandemic achievement in the areas of reading and math. And they outline, and of course, and we're all asking, "How did you do it? How'd you do it?" Right? So I kept reading. And you would think, "Oh, that makes sense," right? They had high expectations for all students, that we were like, "We're going to go into this saying, 'All kids can,'" that we're not going to use pandemic as an excuse anymore. They made sure that the curriculum was the same for all classrooms, all grades, all schools in that school district. That one school with second grade wasn't teaching something different from one school in another second grade. So consistency, or if you want, you could call that coherence. They used data. And one school, one state adopted a statewide coaching model where they provided capacity building for teachers and push-in support for kids. Another state adopted what they call a master teacher, same concept, but just different title. And I just found this out this week, that my colleagues down in East Lime in 2021 adopted Diane Sweeney's student-centered coaching model. And they are seeing great results in reading and writing. And they are a school district like ours. They're in the similar district-regional group. So East Lime has adopted a similar coaching model and seeing the results. So that's my little update on coaching. Happy to take questions on that later. Okay, athletics. There's been a lot to say about esports lately. So I love the opportunity to address that. And I want to clarify for our community, I know you know this, so pardon me, but I think it's important, before I go to the next slide, that we clarify that the Board of Ed's capital improvement plan that goes to the mayor, and with gratitude, the mayor brings items to you, involves one-time investments in fixed assets that yield benefits over an extended period. And it consists of bonding, right? That's different. Bonding for major projects outside the annual operating budget. So the reason why we're here tonight is not for capital projects. It's not for the bonding. We were here not too long ago, till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, doing that. That is a different source of money. So we can't just cancel esports and say, "Let's take that money and now just fill this hole." I read that on some social media thing. An operational budget outlines the ongoing costs necessary for day-to-day business operations over a specific time, typically a fiscal year, focuses on nondiscretionary expenses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? So in the world of capital improvement, spending a million dollars on athletic thing is not new in Milford. In fact, over the last 10 years, here are a couple sample projects. The foreign softball field costs about a million dollars. The foreign track costs about $600,000. The foreign football field costs about a million dollars. The law track costs about a million dollars. And law football and softball, well, that costs about $3 million. And those are all appropriation requests approved by the Board of Ed that goes to the mayor, that goes to the Board of Alderman. Esports is a C I A C-sanctioned sport. It's not up for an opinion. In this state, it is recognized as a sport. We have spent millions of dollars on sports for other kids. So let's go on to this budget that is before us this year. So the Board of Education's proposed budget amounted to $115,304,923, which at that time was a 4.87% increase. I shared with the board that this budget represents trends that we are experiencing nationwide, state, and citywide. But nonetheless, we have our mindset. We are set on our goals. We're going to keep moving forward because what is before you is primarily a maintenance budget, as Ms. Glennon has already mentioned to you. We have, these are the primary drivers. As I've talked to you on, you could probably phrase it, quote my phrase, that we are a human, capital-driven industry. The way we provide services is through people. Just like when I go to the doctor, I get a service by that person. That person sees me, provides me with consult. Well, about 76, 77% of our budget equates to salaries and benefits. Very, very little remains when it comes to discretionary things. We are required to adopt a program under Right to Read. I will tell you, we are doing a series of something called Let's Connect, where myself and other cabinet members go and talk to teachers throughout the year. And we sit and we let them tell us anything and ask us anything, give us feedback on what's going well, what's not going well. It's been really cool. It's been awesome conversation with our teachers. And we were just at an elementary school today. And they can't stop raving about the literacy program we've adopted. They're so grateful that we're doing it. But in order for us to adopt the full thing and be in compliance with the state, we need some additional funds there. And that is a compliance requirement. We have to do that by July 1st. We have huge increases in the area of employee benefits of almost $700,000. Our specialized programming, we're going to shift some things around, but we need a little bit more there to meet individual student needs in-house. Otherwise, we're looking at out-of-district tuition costs that will cost much more. And here's the big driver, is our transportation contract has been renewed. I'm sure you'll have questions about that, and Mr. Brennan will be happy to dig right into that with you. Special education tuition contracted services are going up. Our entitlement grants are decreasing, and they're definitely not keeping up to pace with the rising costs of items that we have on those grants. And in the world of utilities, well, we're experiencing what you're experiencing, sharp rising costs. While we're not doing anything new and special, no bells and whistles, I think Ms. Glennon mentioned, we are committed to these improvements. So what this represents is a move forward, keep doing good things for kids in teaching and learning. And this is just a reminder that this budget does not meet the growing facility and grounds needs of our school buildings. That due to the strain placed on this budget that's outlined in the section above, and in light of the development of the long-range facilities plan, we chose to slow down and in some cases, delay projects. And these line items do not portray a true reflection of our facility and grounds needs. So every year we go, so I think most of you know that I use a zero-based budget development approach. We roll all of our counts, pardon me, to zero, and then we build up. And then when we take a look at comparatively last year to this year, we say, "Well, we were able to find reductions in some line items." So please know that in these line items, we were able to find savings of $645,000. And actually, we're giving you a three-year analysis of that, that over three years, we were able to roll back $1.2 million in specific line items. Just demonstrating our, it's not always add, 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 add. In fact, speaking of add, 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 through the zero-based budgeting process, all requests come to me from departments at the school level, grade levels, principals, department heads, central office, and me. And I thought it would be just fun to show you what those requests look like. When I sit down with the first draft of the budget, this year, we were looking at requests that we had to reduce by $3.3 million. And in the area of facilities alone, from the facilities department on our side of the organization, there were $24 million of facility projects that we said no to. So this slide basically just demonstrates that we said a no to a lot of requests, a lot of times. That we're not moving forward everything we're asking for. We've already said no in the amount of $3.3 million. in the amount of $3.3 million for this year. This is a graph that I usually fly by, but I'm just going to pause for a minute. Because it was recently brought up by the Board of Finance that they quote-unquote like missed the 2% days. I do too, actually. And those are days when there were sharp declines of enrollment in FTEs. So when there were sharp declines of enrollment, your class sizes start to go down and therefore you reduce FTEs. And an FTE, our salary, our largest line item, that's 77% of our budget. And so you're able to reduce FTEs and therefore reduce your costs and reduce what you propose and ask for as far as resources is concerned. But those, like, 2017 was the lowest budget request. It was less than 1%. And at that time, I just wanted to, I pulled out some costs of common items. And we're paying $2.41 for a gallon of gas. The times just aren't the same. And our, even based on this budget before you, we're sitting, talking how really worried we are on what's happening with our utilities. And that we may not have budgeted enough actually for next year in the world of utilities. I don't know about what's happening in your business or your home, but things are just continuing to skyrocket. And we're starting to see that impact on the rise of costs of essential instructional supplies and just regular supplies. That just in the last month, we're starting to see those things really cost a lot more. This is just a pictorial representation of our budget. And whether you prefer it pictorially or by chart, these two slides are the same. And you'll see the totals and changes up and or down by object code. And lastly, what I'll leave with you before we take your questions, and I appreciate your patience in this lengthy presentation, is our current status, actually. So the Board of Ed adopted the 2526 budget at $115,344,923, which represented a 4.87% increase, as I just mentioned. And the Board of Finance adopted a $114,017,417 budget, which demonstrates a 3.7% increase. That is before you for consideration. So thank you for allowing me so much time to talk to you about some key factors and celebrations in the Milford public school system. We're happy to take your questions.
I'm going to entertain any questions from the Board members for the Board of Education. Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First, just a comment. I want to thank you for all the data and all the information that you've provided. I want to clarify something that I've seen on social media, which is the claim that the Board of Alderman don't get a line-by-line version of the Board of Education budget. And I just want to show that we get an entire book. It has narrative explanations. It has tons and tons of detail. I'm sure, you know, my colleagues may have questions and some people may want some more detail. But to say that we've asked many times for a line-by-line budget, I saw it on social media, that's simply not true. We get a lot of data, a lot of detail. And I appreciate the detail and the explanation that you've given us here tonight. I have one question. If you could just speak to the increase in benefits, that one kind of sticks out to me. And we're seeing, you know, on the city side, some of the, our healthcare investments going down. So I wanted to understand how that's different from what we're seeing here in the school budget.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. So I'm assuming you're talking about the 2,000 accounts? If I can refer you to page 11 in the front of the book there? So yes, those, the 2,000, was there a specific account in general or just overall?
So I was looking at the chart that we have in tonight's presentation.
Okay.
It just says overall benefits.
Sure. So primarily, it's made up of a few different accounts there in our benefits area. So when you look at that, you have your insurance personnel, which is like our life insurance for our employees. We also have our over-65 employees that we provide services to. And we have our workers' compensation. So those amounts are based on the data that was given to us from our consultant on what the projected increase would be. Our life insurance is, it is like a death benefit. So it is something that goes to the employees, which would cause for that increase. The workers' compensation. On page 11?
Page 11 gives you a blow-by-blow.
If you look at page 11? And I was looking at Roman numeral, number 11?
Okay, now I understand. Yep.
Regular number 11.
Yep.
Has the increases by type of insurance.
Okay. So in the chart that you gave, that we got tonight, it said benefits are up $716,000. It's a 10.668% increase. So I just wanted to know which of the accounts are the biggest drivers?
Absolutely. So that's across all the 2,000 series?
Yes, yes.
So the insurance, the life insurance piece was the biggest driver of that. And the workers' compensation. So if you look on page Roman numeral 11, that one has a breakdown of the percentages by each one of those accounts. So the insurance one for life insurance was going up approximately 24%. The workers' compensation was going up by about 9%. And then for our over-65 population, that one was about 9% as well. So for the insurance, for the 2002 one, the 24%, that was our, that's our third year, our final year in a three-year contract. So that was negotiated back a few years ago. And those increases have been projected for the past few years. So that one, we were expecting that's what it was going to be. But this is the final year of that three-year contract, coming up in the 2526 year. So we are looking to, once again, go out and try to find the best offer. But that would be for the 2627 budget. So that one's a locked-in rate. Workers' compensation is based on experience and payroll. So that's, those are the numbers that were given to us by our consultant for the projection at the time of building this budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one last comment or question, but we can go to another person if you want.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Katia. There's just some questions that I would like to ask and just from your presentation. Can we just go back a little bit, a little bit, and talk about the ESER 1 and 2 and ARPA funds? What were the differences between ESER monies and ARPA funds?
So now you're really testing my memory, Alderman Vitale. So when ESER funds first came out, they were immediate relief for COVID-related expenses, FFN, masks, gloves, cleaning supplies, et cetera. And then, if I remember, we were getting closer to like ESER 3 or ARPA. And those were categorically, we were given options. And 20% of those funds had to go toward instructional support. And then we had options like ventilation, air systems, things like that. So there were like, I think, four or five categories that we were allowed to spend. And we had to expend all of those by a certain date, which has passed. And we were able to completely expend those funds.
Right. I'm just going back, just as, I didn't remember what the ARSA fund were really geared into. And ARPA, the same thing. And the question would be, how much did we? Sean, maybe you can answer this. How much did we receive in ARPA funds?
If you give me a minute, I can bring it up, but...
Doesn't have to be exact. I mean, it's just a matter of saying.
I can't get online because of the Wi-Fi, but... I think one of them was $4 million.
Approximately $5 million. How many of those funds were dedicated to hiring staff?
Okay, so we made a very cognizant decision. And we were, I don't know if you remember. Now we're testing one another's memory, Alderman Vitale.
That's a challenge.
When we first came before the Board of Alderman, we were very, very transparent that we were going to put school counselors, 11 school counselors on the grant. And that we would move portions of those counselors to the general fund over the course of three years, because we had to expend it out three years. So that, we with intention, shared that with the community and said, this is, that is a funding cliff we're creating, but we also have a plan to move those positions over, and we did.
Right. And again, you know, we suffer with that, not the decision that you made per se, but to hire employees with ARPA funds when the ARPA funds dried up, the positions didn't dry up, obviously, because they moved into a line item and into the budget. And way back when, Lamont said for one, Lamont, this was from Lamont, for one, for one has expressed minimal sympathy for those districts, arguing they were wrong to spend temporary federal money or anything they weren't willing to sacrifice when the funds expire. So again, monies were spent on positions that because of ARPA funds being dissolved, positions still are still in effect. So that we spent ARPA monies on positions that are there today, which increased, somewhat increased the budget at that particular point in time. And they're on for the next few years, anyway.
The Board and I had already talked about school counselors prior to COVID hitting. And that was always a plan, I think, of the Board. That was expressed prior to even coming, I think. So we knew our elementary schools needed counselors and our middle schools needed additional. So the plan had always been, Alderman Vitale, that we would be moving toward a school counseling model at the elementary school. And what would, it would have still happened, but we would have just been adding like three at a time. So what that allowed us to do was hire them all in one batch and fund for them over the course of three years. So I would not respectfully agree that this is the cause of a funding cliff. This was the cause of an intentional plan.
Right. It has its pros and cons, as we know. If I can just ask, in your presentation tonight, with the collective bright spots on one of the slides, you indicated that there's a 6% increase in students demonstrating college and career readiness on AP exams, 174 students named as AP scholars, 8% growth in physical fitness, 7.5 growth in ELA growth, and 5.7 growth in mathematics. When we talk about, especially what interests me is the idea of, the idea of reading and math and language arts in English. If it went up 7.5%, what did it, what was it up from?
I would, I'm happy to send you the video and the presentation from the Student Achievement Night that we did in September with the Board of Education. And then we did a District Accountability Night, where we presented our results as well. And that gives you great detail.
I mean, can you just give me a number for, so?
No, I'm sorry, I can't.
Seven and a half percent to, from 60%, from 70%?
I can't, because is it grade three, is it grade four, is it grade five? Is it, it's just, it's not that easy of an answer. Like, you're an educator, you know, right?
Right. So we were always concerned about whether we had 60% proficient, 75% proficient. What happens to the other 25%? What happens to those other kids that hopefully don't fall through the cracks in the support services that we're given? I mean, we had to make, we had to make right goals as far as teacher goals, student goal.
Yep, we still do that.
Right on out through the idea that, especially with the CMTs, that we saw growth the next year. So I'm always concerned with the idea of what is the percentage at that point that kids are at that level? And then what happens to that remaining percentage of those people, those kids in math and reading and writing?
Well, good news on the next slide that you're referring, that 10 out of 12 areas, our kids did show growth. So hey, that's good news.
Absolutely. But hopefully that the growth is enough to make sure that these kids are learning and growing on and hopefully being successful. The other point was that when you had indicated the fact that state level with, with grade level and personal goals for kids, and you can see the fluctuation.
The growth targets, yeah.
So when, you know, the mantra always was, oh, hopefully we get these kids reading on grade level by grade two or three, okay? And for those kids who don't make that progress for the next few years, don't they fall behind? Let's say, let's say they're not reading on grade level in second grade. And they are at 1.3, 1.4 in second grade. And they're making, they're making progress. Second grade, they're falling farther behind because of grade level, third grade? If they're reading on a second 2.3 level? At which point is there, is there a point at which that we're looking at these kids need to be on grade level? Is that not a goal or not a striving?
Yeah, that's absolutely a goal.
So how, within all of this, when do we expect those kids to be on grade level? Is there an expectation in that area? In reading or writing?
Every year, we expect them to be on grade level. So I'm not sure if I, every year, we expect them to be on grade level. We have those goals and we have those assessments.
But they're not, obviously. Because what you say, when you, and as I understood, I could be corrected, obviously. When a child has a person...
I'm not really following you, I'm sorry.
Okay. You said that the state is not really concerned? Did I hear they're really not concerned about grade level? As long as they're making progress toward that end?
Nope, nope, nope. I didn't say that the state's not concerned.
Okay. But again, how do, what are we, what are we doing in the act? This is maybe rhetorical at this point, when a kid is not on grade level.
Well, I think I shared with you that we have a student-centered coaching model, and that's only like the tip of the iceberg. Like, we have so, I mean, this feels like we could provide you a year's worth of instructional highlights that we give to the Board. At once a month, we give the Board an update on what we're doing in the world of instruction to address this exact question. What are we doing for all kids so that they could be successful and be on grade level?
Student performance is extremely important, obviously. When we talk about budget money with 114, whether it be 114, 115 million dollars per year, the idea of kids making success and being successful at a particular point in time and achieving every year they go on. We always, there were always kids that fell through the cracks, you know? And, you know, how, that was always worried in me as an administrator and as in education. You know, how do we...
We have the same goals, Alderman Vitale.
Right. But the point is, today, 20 years, 30 years later, we should have the resources and the ideas of how we better attend to having those kids reach grade level or improve on a yearly basis.
If I had that answer, I probably wouldn't be sitting here because the achievement gap exists at very high levels in the state of Connecticut and across the nation. So your concern is shared by all educators.
And hopefully that we can get to that point at one point in time, anyway.
I feel like the presentation we shared that we, it proves that we're making progress and headed in that direction.
And it would be nice...
So it's not minus signs. They're not, we're going down, we're going up.
Right. But it would be nice to know that we've improved 6% over what?
Well, I'm happy to send you those presentations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. The other is the commendations on two schools, Orange Avenue and Pumpkin Delight?
Yeah, isn't that great?
Fantastic. But how and why did they get there?
I'm happy to send those presentations to you.
Okay.
It's like all of our teaching and learning work.
Okay, I'm just going through some...
And actually, it's based on the supports that our budget provides, right? And actually, it's based on the supports that our budget provides, right? So it's, it's based on those additional people, it's based on the programs we're able to adopt, it's based on the curriculum we're writing, it's based on the assessments we're giving. Like, there's so many answers to that question.
And I always thought that delivery of the curriculum was always the important thing in the classroom.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying that there's so much, yeah.
I know, and these are the questions that I have because of that. Then, the other thing was on district leadership and the instructional and the financial leadership. When we, when you listed the line staff, for instance, IT, so we know we have an IT individual who's ahead, how many are in that department? How many are in the departments that are listed before, before us here? How many instructional people are there? I think you had indicated nine, seven? There were seven instructional?
There were seven instructional supervisors, yeah.
Seven.
Yep, it's in this slide.
Right, that's what you had said. We got some other information. But anyway, how many are in those departments for central office that are working out of central office? Can you give me a number of individuals that work out of central offices?
Are you talking about secretaries too?
No, instructional people, those that I make. Just, but, but you talk about individuals as far as the instructional or the PPS supervisors, right? Let's just take it, because I'm just seeing this here.
All the answers are right on that slide, Alderman Vitale.
I missed it then. I just, I just missed that, that total number of people within the programs. I mean, we, instructional leaderships, I know that there are supervisors, so that it lists those in the instructional supervision column. So I don't see where it's telling, telling me how many people are in that division.
Instructional supervisors, humanities, humanities, STEM, STEM, art, music, media.
So K through five, STEM is K through five, so we count up all the people? I don't understand that.
That's one person, that's their title.
So they handle all these STEM programs within the city?
All the STEM programs, K through five, there's one person that does all of that.
So in the instructional supervision, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Seven.
Seven of them, okay.
Those are their titles, that's why they're there.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't understand it as that individual, I thought there were more than that, okay? The other just question as to, what initiated the change of nomenclature as far as human services, the human service department, it's now?
You mean human resources?
Human resources, I'm sorry, right.
I should use a microphone, I'm sorry. So the human resources department went through a process of developing a vision and a mission, helping to align itself to the goals of the Board of Education. They did professional training, they met as a department, and based on the research that they found and based on the goals that they wanted to meet, they decided to reinvent themselves and be a little bit more 21st century friendly and really represent themselves as talent, management and development. So they changed, they decided to write a mission statement and come together under a new title.
Okay, so obviously it's not human, human resources anymore, it's the idea?
Well, they probably still do HR work.
They still?
Yeah, someone has to process onboarding people, that's HR.
You know, again, I don't want to see a school closed, I don't want to see monies cut in that vein, that there's going to be a threat, there's going to be a reduction in school sizes and whatever classroom. I've gotten, I've gotten a lot of, I've gotten a lot of emails indicating that because they're quoting, there is a cut in the budget which is going to eliminate small class sizes, which people need to know that the fact is that's all contractual anyway, that there's going to be, STEM is going to be eliminated. There were a lot of things that were going to be eliminated because of this particular cut, and one of the issues that you, I guess you had presented, was the cut of Harperside Middle School. Last year was the same cut, you made adjustments to that, to that, to that purpose and that we didn't cut a school and didn't have to cut a lot of programs because within the budgets and line items, which, again, we can't tell the Board of Education, you got to cut this line item, it's the bottom line, we all understand that, it's the bottom line that's cut, if anything, then you have to make and reallocate monies within that, within that budget. But just to be clear, that the city side or the Board of Education budget is not a simple, whatever you proposed as a 115 or the Board of Finance proposed a 114, is that the total amount of money that's allocated to education is $145 million in the city. And that's with all the ancillary, all the ancillary accounts such as the educational health services, contribution to health service operations, education employee benefits, school debt, educational audit fees and so forth. So that number that the Board is asking and is requesting is not 114 or 115, as I see it, it's, the city provides 145 million, just to, just to give some information to those people who are not clear on what the city spends on education in the city, which comes to about $28,000 per pupil expenditure. So, you know, it is a big item, it is a labor-intensive program and educational piece and department, and I appreciate all of that, and I appreciate, and I can only applaud the people that came out and talked so passionately about, and the kids who came out so passionately and talked about the things that they want to see. But I also was disappointed in those people who pointed fingers at us, and I wasn't very appreciative of that, because it showed the ill-informed individual who came to us and said a lot of the things they did say, and it was just hurting to look at that and see that, that night. So I thank you for the presentation and thank you very much.
Alderman Willis.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Kataya. The IDA Part B grant that we get from the federal government, I believe, did we get that from the Department of Education? Yes.
Yes, unite. Do you have more questions about that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, oh, Matt Cavallaro, Director of Business Services. Yes, the ID grant, IDA grant is a federal, federal funding that is passed through the Connecticut State Department of Education to all Board of Educations.
Okay, because my concern is with what's going on in Washington DC now, the Trump administration and Republicans are just arbitrarily cutting money from different programs and grants. This grant is one point north of 1.5 million dollars. Is this grant on shaky grounds like, right now, of losing it? Or is there, is there a plan for that, just in case, because we're all in kind of limbo here, to say the least?
I would, I share your concern, definitely as someone who manages the budget. We haven't had any indication, firm indication, whether it will be cut or?
We haven't been given any communication on that.
But I do know, over the years, this grant has continued, we've continued to receive less and less funding as special education expenditures continue to increase year after year.
This is definitely one of those grants that are not keeping up with the costs. There's a significant gap between what it's really costing and what they're giving us. And then there's state money also, in this world of special education that we are, reimbursement rates for students, those rates are going down, actually.
It's really a shame that there's one person in one political party that's putting us in this situation. Thank you.
Alderman Casey.
Through you, to, I guess, Dr. Kataya. I just started reading the first page of the substance, and one of the things is, I was curious of the, due to legislative changes, kindergarten entry, and I'm, I'm a pan-pactor, because I have a six-year-old kid, so I know about the, you know, the law, but do you, one of the issues is, you, as a result, you may, the Board of Education may have, they add several kindergarten classrooms next school year for, you know, full-time staff. Do you, first of all, do you see it actually happening or just a potential?
Thank you, Alderman Casey. We are still planning for the potential. We are still running our kindergarten enrollment registration process, and we're also required to perform a waiver request process. So any child that does not meet the new age requirement, the parent could ask for a waiver. And so that requires us to assess children, and I think we're on our third wave of waivers. And so we haven't completed that process right now, so I'm not anticipating, based on what we're seeing right now, with a spike, but it's still early, Alderman Casey, believe it or not. Some parents wait till the summer to register their kids, despite all of our marketing efforts. So if you know any incoming kindergarteners, please make sure they're registered.
But how's it track, like, if you do anticipate hiring more kindergarteners, how, would that mean that we anticipate, you know, hiring more first-grader teachers like the next budget cycle? So that's interesting. And also, like, how many kindergarteners do we have right now compared to, you know, how many first graders? Like, give me an idea how, you know, you know, like, we are at closer capacity or, or, you know, regular, or I just want to give you a good idea.
Sure, so I can give you, we have official enrollment counts that are taken by the state on October 1st of every year. So if you don't mind, I'll use our October 1st numbers, because those are official numbers.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. So the total number of kindergarteners on October 1st in our classrooms was 346 students, and the total number of first graders was 408. And you'll note that sharp difference because of the change in starting age. So it went from January 1st to September 1st, so you're automatically removing four months of children who were born in those years. So we obviously will have those 346 students go to first grade, and like I said, we haven't completed our kindergarten registration yet. At the elementary, Alderman Vit, not Vitale, Casey, we have pretty strict classroom guidelines, so as soon as we hit 20 students in a class in kindergarten, we add teachers. And as soon as we, and that's the number for K through two, and in three through five, the number is 23.
I was just curious, like, because I know, like, some, you know, people, friends that I'm close to are, you know, like, and, you know, from distant school districts, that some waivers, they, they wanted a waiver because they have, they have preschools that they already used to, and, you know, so how likely, well, not likely, I didn't want to, you know, but do you give the waivers, are you still doing the waivers now or still, they're phasing out? Or like, how, what's the, you know, I don't know if?
So do you mean we're handing it out like candy, or?
Well, no, I just, I just want to know, because like, I just want to know, because sooner or later, I guess, the, you know, the state will, no, I don't know, because I know how it works, because, you know, sooner or later, they will have to be a bright line role, I guess, and, you know.
I don't think they're going to do that, actually.
Okay.
I've heard that state legislators are, they're thankful for the four-month window and the opportunity for school districts to provide a waiver through an assessment. We, we do our assessment with great, high levels of integrity. We have a developmentally appropriate, kid-friendly assessment. We're not sitting a kid down at a computer and saying, take this test. We're actually engaging them in a play-based experience, and based on a rubric that is nationally, based on national standards, we assess, quote unquote, assess the child to see if they are developmentally ready. We're not testing them for ABCs, 123s, because honestly, that's our job. We're supposed to teach to kids. So we do have a process that we stick to, but we're not just like opening the doors and saying, come on in.
Yeah, it's like a state mandate, but I can tell you, some people that were frustrated, because, you know, they, they participated in going in and rolling and.
There are a group of families that you're probably hearing from that are not happy with our results, but somewhere along the way, you have to say some no, give some no's to some children that end up in that four-month window, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Chair V. Charles, through you to, well, I guess I'll start with Dr. Kataya. As I sit here and listen to your presentation and listen to the questions, I have lots of comments I can make, but I have to kind of streamline then. The first is on the instructional coaches, and I think it's been clear over the course of time, the value, and finally seen some results of that. And I also just wanted to point out again that you identified that initially, when you went through the coaching model, that they were originally full-time instructors, faculty, teachers, and you utilized them in a different format. So you were being mindful of that transition. So when I hear some challenges in reference to these coaches and make reference to our model that we used in the past, where we had the coaches and the interventionalists that were reading only, that we've definitely expanded that role. And we've seen in public comment, just like we did with the counselors, come forward and express the value of that. So when I hear it's still being brought as an attention of a talking point, I find a bit of unbeliebableness that we're still talking about the same things. An investment in our children's education is what we're talking about here, and that's an investment in our community. So having said that, I was curious, when you presented the results of the coaching models of the two states that are showing, that were in that publication, would you mind sharing the two states?
This article highlighted Alabama and Louisiana.
Alabama and Louisiana, southern states, okay, interesting. All right, then I want to just move into the concept that the city side is putting a lot of money in, so that you're really not asking for 115, but you're asking for 145. That's misleading. This is how the budget process has always gone. You're asking for the one point of 115 and not 145. So I do want to point out that in your initial request, if we look at the last table, where you have a 4.87% increase, we know that salaries account for a good chunk of that, contractual agreements, which I know from previous presentations you identified was 2.68%. So in essence, you were looking for an increase in 2.19%. So again, I just want to be sure that people understand the information and are not misled by some additional comments that can confuse people, because in talking to individuals about the Board of it, budget, individuals are very confused, is a very complicated process. And to start putting in pieces of information that further adds to confusion does not help people feel like they understand what's going on. So I know that that cut adds to making that even a lower percentage, which of course I think, I've heard from parents concerned, of course, about the closure of Harperside as well, as well as losing world language, stem cell. as well, as well as losing world language, stem cell, not stem cell, sorry, healthcare, stem labs. And, you know, the excitement that we have and the stories that I have heard of first graders coming home and talking about how much they love Spanish and I've just heard so many personal stories of the positive impact that our educational system has had on our young people. And I can't, I can't do anything but support the forward movement of what you are doing. And your presentation has spoken to so many points to talk about, to diffuse some misunderstanding. And so I guess the last thing that I want to transition to, and maybe this is for Mr. Brennan, another talking point that a lot of people have brought up is the cost of the busing. And I know that you've done a great presentation in explaining the cost, and that's another high driver for the budget. And it's not all related to Durham's contract and that it's also connected to special education. So I would like to give you the floor to explain that breakdown as well.
Absolutely, thank you. Through you, Chair. So our Durham contract extension, so just to give a little history on the overview of how we got to where we are today. So we initially began with Durham in 2005, and over the course of time, we have engaged in five contract extensions. This one, of course, will be the sixth contract extension. This current one is ending this summer. So throughout the course of this year, we were approached in terms of a potential sixth contract extension. So they proposed a potential extension, and what we did at that point was, we did a comparative analysis of where we stood at the cost that we were currently paying across the state. So we reached out to other districts in the state and there's no, I also want to preface it, where there's no one list, like you can't go on a state website and find a list of every district's contract. So what we did is we reached out to other districts and said, what are your current rates right now and what do you anticipate paying based on locked-in contracts for the future? Based on that comparative analysis, our current contract that we were ending is one of the lowest in the states. And the reason for that is we locked in right after, we locked in for a contract extension right at the onset of COVID, when students were at home. So we engaged in a contract extension at that point. When there was so much uncertainty with the future, we were able to negotiate at that point, a really, really amazing contract at that point that extended us up to where we are today. And I would call it an artificially low contract when you look at the numbers across the state. So we knew going into this upcoming contract year, that we were going to be hit with a significant increase in transportation. That was not going to be a surprise. We knew that, we had that included in our assumptions, we baked that in, and we just, looking at the data of districts that are similar to us and across the state, it was going to be significant. So through our conversations with Durham and working back and forth with that proposal, we were able to secure a rate that while it does seem as a shock value initially to you, that rate still puts us below average across the state in this next five years based on the data that we've collected. So even with this 19.75% increase in this year one, we are still below the state average. And in each successive year, we were able to lock in, so the 19.75 was in year one, but then for the four years after that, we locked in a very reasonable 4% increase for those additional four years. So that's something that we now have a very steady prediction on. We know year after year what our increase is going to entail, and I think 4% is very reasonable with some of the uncertainty that we have moving forward. And each one of those years, once again, just to emphasize, we are below state average on that amount. Yes. So our Durham contract accounts for a large portion of our regular ed transportation and a small part of our internal transportation. So transportation in general is a large umbrella of all of our students, which include our regular ed students and also our special education students. So Durham does account for some of our internal special ed transportation, but the majority of our special ed transportation is not Durham. It's contracted, we go out to bid on a yearly basis, it's based on individual student needs, and that, those individual contracts are awarded to different companies and Durham does not service that amount. A couple other things, a couple other points about this Durham contract extension. They are located in Milford, so they are a facility that is paying taxes to the city of Milford. We currently also benefit from a very rare benefit of them paying the first dollar of every gas, gallon of gasoline that we use. And that's another one of those very rare things that not many districts at all, if any, are able to utilize that. We have a strong history with them. They're a team member that we would rely on very heavily, and they're very responsive to our needs, they know our families very well. So it's, it's multifaceted of, you know, not just financially, but when you look at the company as a whole, they're, they're someone that's really, worked really closely in collaboration with us over the years. And I think that was all the pieces of the actual contract extension piece, but I just want to go back to the transportation contract in general, the transportation line item in general. So yeah, portion of that is for Durham, but the total increase also factors in special ed transportation. And those, those needs for our special ed students could vary greatly and could drive costs up significantly in that portion of it. So when you look at the transportation line item as a whole, it's important to remember that there are things that are outside of our needs. If we needed to transport a student that was medically fragile, it could be additional staff, it could be a certain type of vehicle that's needed for that actual student. So those costs right now, just like we're seeing with many of our other line items in the special education, are rising significantly, and it's something that we are trying to just adjust for within our budget. I hope that answered the question that you.
It does, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alderman Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to our panel. I'm not sure who each of these questions will be directed to, so whoever has the ability to answer, I appreciate it. And I appreciate the, the time that you've put into, obviously, this budget as you do every year, and the time that you've put into the presentation, and thank you for, for my future questions here. You know, the elephant in the room that was brought out is there's, there's nobody that wants to see Harborside closed. In fact, when that proposal was introduced at the Board of Education meeting on March 31st, I was a little surprised and taken aback because there is a long-term facilities plan that is, is being worked through, and I've attended workshops, I know a number of Aldermen have, and I think it's, I think it's a great stepwise progression that is But I was, my question is why then that was the initial proposal of, well, our first option is to take a hard look at closing Harborside when there is a, a facilities plan in place, instead of turning the lens inward and saying, what can we do administratively to try to fray these costs and not put the burden on 400 families or 400 children in Harborside School and those families? So that's, that's my first question, how that was the first response that came about.
Thank you, Alderman Jenkins. So I do understand the jarring nature of that, so I'll recognize that. And I'm not, I can't remember the language you just used, but I just want to underscore that, that is not our preferred option, it is not our first option, it is, we felt that we had to come out with that early on, because if that is anywhere in the scope of possibility, we need to get busy on it. Because that would be a heavy, heavy lift, as you mentioned, 400 students, families, et cetera. So we wanted to start the conversation early on, you know, March 31st is not normally how early we talk about potential reductions. And that was very shortly after the Board of Finance's action, and we needed more time to look, as you say, internally. So while I understand the impact of talking about the potential closure of Harborside in such a manner impacts 400 students, if you take a look at the list that was published this past Monday at our Board of Ed meeting, that list is much more extensive, it's three pages of options that, and I like the way you portrayed that internally, is reflective. But if you look at those options, there isn't a place where it doesn't impact kids, because we believe all aspects of our organization impact students. So if we were to consider something at any level, whether it's a reduction of an FTE, a person, or the reduction of a program, you're still impacting children. So crazy item on there would be the removal of STEM teachers. So like the counselors, but not through a grant, this board took the courageous, made the courageous decision to add eight STEM teachers, elementary schools, great value. So if we pull the STEM program, cut the eight teachers, we're impacting now 20, 200 kids, right? So there isn't really an option that doesn't impact a group of kids. So in no means did we mean to say, this is our first option, let's start here. It's, if this is at all an option, we need to start working on it. And I think if you rewind and watch that board meeting, I asked a couple of times if this is at all a possibility, I need the board to signal to us as a team so we can start getting busy. You can imagine the work that goes involved, that goes into possibly redistributing 400 kids. So that was our only intention, and I'm sorry if that was misinterpreted. And would I do that differently? Yeah, probably. I would put out the entire list, but the closure of a school would most definitely be on that list along with many other options. So thank you for that feedback.
And I appreciate that.
Ms. Brennan wants to add something?
Sure.
So I just want to circle background because this is the second time this has been alluded to. So last year, as I mentioned, we had an, also a $1.3 million reduction to our budget that was not, nothing was reinstated, and we used, more than half of that reduction was offset by eliminating $775,000 worth of buildings and grounds projects, which sounds like a lot of money, but over the years, we have always shortchanged. That line is always shortchanged. So, you know, last, last year, we were attempting to catch up a little bit, but we eliminated the majority of that, those expenses. And then this year, with this current budget that we're discussing, we've already minimized as much as we can those two lines. So with a second $1.3 million reduction, we don't have another $700,000 of buildings and grounds work that we can go to and eliminate. So we are looking at deep cuts. This is a deep cut, it's a big amount of money, and so we are having to go to other areas to look for the reduction if the money's not restored.
And I agree that, that buildings and grounds is, is not a viable source. I did watch that meeting a couple of times, and I, I think that, Ms. Brennan, even, even you were taken aback by that, and said that there appears to be a tolerance in, and I'm paraphrasing, these are not your exact words, but a tolerance in Milford for the dollar amounts that are requested in the budget and that we have to get our budget under control. So I found that interesting. But I was very pleased, come the next meeting, to see what came out with that internal lens. And as I look through this, there are over $6 million of areas that are opportunities to be cut, some that are probably not viable and would hurt a lot more than others. But I've gone through this, and this is not our, our position, we certainly do not dictate or even have any control over where those cuts are, but looked at about a significant number of these that could save 1.6. And that gets you right to where you need to be. I'm happy to have that conversation with you tonight or another night offline, but I, as I said, I am very pleased to see that there was an internal look rather than the knee-jerk reaction of affecting those, those families. My questions really come about with, had you seen the Yukon study that came out in January with regard to the rise of administrative positions compared to a decrease in enrollment as well as a decrease in regular teachers?
No, but I'd be happy to get it from you.
So I have a copy here.
Great.
I will make sure I forward it to your office.
Thank you.
And what they are saying is that across the state, what they are finding overall is that school districts have had a rapid rise in the number of administrative positions that have been hired, even though there is a decrease in the number of student enrollment as well as regular teaching positions. So questions are, how many administrative positions have been added or reclassified in Milford in the past, say, five years?
We added one administrator position, an instructional supervisor. And reclassified would be Mr. Brennan from Mr. Richatelli, who does not hold the certifications by the state to be considered an administrator.
Okay.
So it's an accounting function, Alderman Jenkins.
Okay.
So Mr. Richatelli's position was accounted for in a different line item that is not administrator, but because Mr. Brennan holds the appropriate certification, we call it the O92, he has to be accounted for in the administrator line.
So when I, and thank you very much, Mr. Brennan, for, for sending me the information that I had requested. So when I look at the list of those district positions, as well as principals that are on here, I see that there are 42 administrative positions in central office and there are 14 principals. Mr. Richatelli's position is one of these.
Can you clarify which list you're looking at? Can you clarify which list you are referring? I think we sent you several lists, so.
This was not the one that you sent me today, this was the one that I received on Monday.
There were three spreadsheets in the attachment?
There were, yes.
Which one?
And the list that I have here
What is it entitled?
Includes MEA teacher positions.
Okay.
It said, you said does not exclude?
I'm sorry.
You said does not exclude?
Does include MEA teacher positions. District and school building leadership, 25, 26. The initial position on here is the superintendent, the last one is director of food service.
Okay, so let's, happy to work through the list with you.
Yeah.
So obviously, everything through principal and supervisor, so where it says supervisor PPS?
Yes.
Those would be considered administrators for us. And then pick back, so those would be considered administrators for us. In our world, we call an administrator someone that would be certified
Mm-hmm.
Through the state of Department of Education. And then when you pick up with director of talent management, those individuals will be considered managers or directors.
Okay. Nevertheless, they're not on school grounds? They're in central office?
So their office isn't central office, but
Okay.
There probably aren't many days that you find the director of food service in her office much.
Okay.
And I would say the same for many of these positions, including instructional supervisors. And we can go into great depth and we can agree to disagree, that yes, they have a desk at the office, but the 590 teachers that they serve and the 20, the 5,000 kids they serve are in schools.
Mm-hmm.
So their, their desk is at Parsons.
So bringing up the instructional supervisors as well as the, the PPS positions, the slide that was, that is that was, that is posted there shows seven instructional supervisors. You have nine listed here.
Right. So if you move to the left, student development and academic success and school climate make nine.
Student development.
You see under PPS?
I do. So those are under PPS, but they're listed on this one as instructional supervisors?
Because they are. So you see the, they are instructional supervisors. So we, they report into that department because that department keeps an eye on the continuum of wellness services for all students. So we felt that school climate and student development categorically was under PPS. So you'll see PPS supervisors, PK, elementary, middle and high. If you go to your sheet, Alderman Jenkins, those are supervisor PPS 1, 2, 3. See those three?
Yes.
And then under the word high school here on the screen again, you'll see student development and then school climate. You see those two?
Under.
Student development and academic success.
Development. Uh-huh. Yep.
Two plus seven in the box next to it, to the right, is nine.
Okay. And then there are three, so then that leaves the three PPS supervisors. I don't see, oh, I do see the director above. Okay. Thank you. It was.
Nope, I know.
The numbers were off and, and so I wanted to, to make sure I understood. And then, Mr. Brennan, you and I talked about, I will send you that request for the remainder of those staff positions at, at central office, secretaries, assistants, et cetera. Thank you. So I want to talk a little bit about an area that's not included on this. And I think that, that it needs some, some explaining and some, some looking into as to how this runs, the, the full function of this and, and the way that it works, as well as the expenses. Can you talk to me about the expenses related to HQI?
So there, so HQI outside of our organization may seem like a thing, but a characteristic of a high functioning, effective school district is a common definition of what high quality instruction looks like. And so we've spent time with our teachers going way back to 2018, 19 to take a look at research and talk about what do we want instruction to look like in our classrooms every day across the district. So it, it is a definition of practice. I, I think similar to the medical field, that there's a definition of good practice in what doctors do, what nurses do, right? So it's just a definition of practice. So the expenses related to HQI, we, we hold a special event in the summer. It is six days. It's run, at first, we had, our very first year, we had what we called them as guest teachers. They were not our employees. That was the first year that we did it. We brought in a teacher from another district, an administrator from another district, and we held it. And our goal was always to run it and facilitate it ourselves. And we are at that goal. We run it with our very own teachers, our very own supervisors, our assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. So it's completely run in-house. And we have our very own teachers that volunteer to be the guest teacher now, where in that first year, we brought that outsider that I talked about. So we have our very own kindergarten teacher, our very own science teacher from foreign, our own music teacher from Orchard Hills. So those are the, some of the teachers that have been part of it in the past. And this year, we're recruiting more teachers to be the guest teachers. So we usually have Alderman Jenkins about four classrooms with four of our teachers, and they teach for an hour and a half with our very own kids, so our own students benefit from it. And the teachers who sign up to come then, watch teachers teach. And it is a, a model of, let's watch teachers implement our curriculum using some highly, high quality instructional practices, HQI, that is just a definition of practice. And then the students go home and those guest teachers, those four teachers of ours, come and debrief and have a dialogue with teachers on, so how'd that go? What was, what I was planning to do, I did, it didn't work. These are the instructional decisions I made. This is how I'm going to plan for next time. When this child demonstrated this type of learning, I decided to do this. This was my instructional move. And it's just a great atmosphere, environment of collaboration and a review of practice. We call it a review of practice in our field. We have about 100 of our own teachers come each summer. We'll be, we'll be hosting the sixth year of that this coming summer. We've learned a lot of lessons over the years of what to do, not do, what teachers need, over and over, for five years now. We have teachers tell us it's the best professional learning that they've ever been to. They feel valued. They feel that they are growing and bringing things back to their classroom. So that is the main event of HQI. We reached our goal of, of really empowering teachers to run it. And we do pay teachers to come because that's professional learning time. Just like, let's say, Alderman Jenkins, if we brought in a consultant from a literacy company and we decided to train all of our teachers on literacy instructional practices and it wasn't a contracted day, we have to pay teachers to come in for that training.
Agreed. Understood.
So the teachers that come to HQI week that's run by our teachers get paid to come for the training.
Okay.
And it's usually held at one of our high schools, so we're not paying for a facility. Our supervisors who are already on staff and work through the summer are helping run it. So we actually, no one's forced to come.
No, but if teachers are getting a stipend to be able to come year after year after year, I can understand why they're going to show up again in order to get paid.
It's not a stipend, though. It's, it's by hour. So you get paid by hour to come.
My concern with this is we have professional development on a, a monthly basis and sometimes month, multiple times during the month. So also taught by teachers in the, in the system. When we're looking at areas that we need to save money on, why are we offering these additional costly services? That's the first question that I want to follow up. But there's a second one there. You mentioned that, that it is taught by our own teachers. I have, over the past three years, that consultants Mike Rafferty, Isabel Stevens and Andrew Volker had come in as paid consultants?
Mike Rafferty was one of the externals that I talked about in 1819.
Okay.
He has not been back.
But these are individuals outside of our teachers who are being paid to come in during those sessions. So those are expenses as well as the expense of paying teachers to attend this.
So Mike Rafferty was 1819, that's done. He was one of the individuals that helped us launch it. And Isabel Stevenson and Andrew Volker are part of year, year long work with us. They don't, they're not paid to come to HQI. They're part, so Isabel Stevenson no longer works with us. We've discontinued that contract. Our services with her discontinued because our work with her came to an end. We had a scope of services and that came to an end. Andrew Volker works with us on assessment practices. So he attends HQI. We're not paying him to come to HQI. He doesn't run HQI. He doesn't facilitate HQI. He's there part because of the assessment work he does with us, which is not part of HQI, but related to in, in certain ways. But he is not an external facilitator of that week.
So there are no outside contracts for HQI?
Not for HQI Live, no.
Okay.
And that's what we call it, Live.
Okay.
In that first year, Alderman Jenkins, there was. Dr. Rafferty and Mr. Wakeman. Anybody here, first year?
Nobody was out.
No, Tom started with us. He was, he was an employee. So in 2019 was year one, and Mr. Wakeman and Dr. Rafferty were our facilitators. We paid them for that week to do that.
Okay.
And that was the last year we paid an outside person.
And there are currently no contracts moving forward?
We, for HQI Live?
Correct.
I'm looking at the guy who's running it.
To answer your question, Alderman Jenkins, for HQI Live, no, there are no external contracts. It's all done by our staff internally in district.
Okay. And if you had to give me an estimate, I, I would love to see the, the, the actual accounting for how much we're spending on this. But if you had to give me an estimate, how much, how much does this cost the district when we factor in stipends to teachers, services, expenses, marketing materials? I've seen water bottles. I've seen T-shirts. I've seen flyers. Obviously, there's time spent designing those things, printing those things.
The, the swag, as you're referring to it, was done one year and we've discontinued that. We don't spend any money on that. And we do all of our own marketing using our own people. We, you know, we're pretty proficient on digital, Canva, slides, et cetera. So we're not expending funds in that, those areas. So we, no more swag. That was two years ago.
But two years ago, we were in a budget situation as well. So, you know, those are some of my concerns.
Right. And we made that reduction.
Okay.
But can I just clarify something?
Yeah.
In the world, and I know, in our, an educational institution, there's more professional development than just once a month. That's, that's not, there are conferences, there are people, there are local, regional areas that offer training. So to say, why do we need a week of training on high quality instruction when we have once a month professional learning? That, that's, we don't confine professional learning to just that once a month.
No, that's not what I'm saying. And I'm sorry if I misspoke.
There are lots of professional trainings provided at cost, no cost. That's why we have a professional development line. So those costs related to professional development would be found in, is it the 6,000 series?
8,000.
8,000 series. So we're happy to point you to those costs. But professional development is, is a big umbrella of lots of opportunities. So for example, our physical education teachers annually in November go to Hampden where there is a training for them. And it's done regionally. There are specialists in physical education. So there's always going to be something specialized like that, whether it's content area or instructional practices. So the, I'm sorry if I misunderstood you, but the one Wednesday of early dismissal is just simply not enough.
What I'm saying is, and I'm not just talking about HQI Live, the, the watching of the episode or the, I'm talking about there is an HQI week or period each summer that, that our teachers are going to.
Yeah.
When we're talking about saving expenses, why not incorporate that into a time where the teachers need to attend professional development? Why not incorporate this? Get rid of the summer expense, the stipends that are going on top of these and, and incorporate them into a lot of time off for our students that our teachers are in professional development? My understanding is there is no minimum requirement for professional development, that we do a fantastic job of providing opportunities, let's shift some of that money over. Save it.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Autieri in just a second, Alderman Jenkins. Sorry, we're, we're talking while you were talking. My apologies for that. That was really rude.
That's okay.
But we're just trying to develop understanding.
Sure.
Of what you're saying. And Mr. Autieri is going to share with you a little bit about how we structure the use of our, during the month time. Because there are so many things teachers need training and updating on. And the educators in the room know that there's just not enough time for everything. And I will say that from an educator's perspective, Alderman Jenkins, when you bring together members of your organization around a common vision to develop their practice around best practices, a standard of practice, and there's excitement around that to then go and use those improved structures, that's a structure that we have deemed important enough to keep in place. And if that money isn't spent in that way, we would have to find a different way. And whether you spend it in professional development fees or a consultant that you bring in, or paying for substitute who's going to cover that teacher's class, and the consequence of that is the teacher's away from kids.
But that's not what you said before. What you said before was that, that the HQI is a, is a valuable service, that, my question is if we were to implement that into the time periods that are required professional development, if teachers have truly said, this is the best instructional and educational experience that I've had, I would think that's where we would focus our professional development during the course of the year, especially in the past three years where we've had budget concerns. And now we're spending more money for professional development where we don't have to.
So we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, Alderman Jenkins.
So how much are we, how much are we talking in HQI?
Happy to send you the, the figures.
Please.
But I will tell you that we do incorporate elements of HQI throughout the year. We get four professional learning days a year. Three are going to happen at the beginning of school year. One will be in November this year. One usually is a day full of mandated training, et cetera. Another is spending time in your classroom to prepare for students who arrive. And then the power of what happens the week of HQI Live is that there is a five day period where teachers are teaching a unit over the course of five days without interruption. And you see the progress of students occur. There's never a time during the school year where you have that. You can't replicate that in the school year. You don't, you can't pull teachers out for five days in a row to watch teaching over the course of time with the same group of students and watch the progression of learning and thinking and strategizing, which is the power of that.
That's a fair point. But do these teachers need this year after year after year? The same teachers attending year after year after year for six years?
We have, we have 600 teachers. And some teachers are due repeat. And there's a different focus each year. And then there are brand new teachers that come and, and new teachers to our district as well. But do you mind if we just spend a minute with Mr. Autieri to explain to you?
Sure.
How the time during the year is spent? Because actually, Mr. Autieri is with us his second year. And one of the pieces that he has reined in, we always have room for improvement. One of the pieces he reined in is how we use time with teachers. And has specifically given definition to every time we have with a teacher, we're providing some definition around whether they're using data, et cetera. So I'm going to turn the mic over.
Please. Thank you.
Alderman Jenkins, thank you so much for the opportunity to respond to your question. So, you know, as Dr. Kataya mentioned, one of the things that is incredibly valuable to us as we talk about professional learning is job embedded, authentic opportunities during the school year to really dig into the live teaching that we do with the students would be difficult, most likely because we're talking about early release days or. be difficult, most likely because we're talking about early release days or opportunities for professional learning during the school year where some of the staff times are staggered. High school, middle school, elementary, all dismiss at different times. So to be able to pull a district-wide team together in the same location at the same time creates a little bit of a challenge. We also know that there's a lot of different competing professional tasks from the content level. So obviously, we know that teaching is highly specialized, and the fact that each content area has the specific information that they are working towards. So there's an element of the time where we're connecting some of that content-level professional learning. We've also taken a major focus on looking at student performance data. And we have 14 different schools in district, and to bring staff together and really have that coherence at professional learning, at looking at student performance data, whether it's disaggregating the data, analyzing it, and even talking about next instructional moves, that's something that we've placed great value on this year. And our team has really looked at all of the different opportunities for professional learning, all of the different systems, and how we can connect them together to tell a really distinct story. So while we're talking about H Q I, which is Dr. Kataya mentioned, is really our core beliefs around how we deliver instruction, how are we engaging kids in the classroom, there's also the element of the content piece. So during the summer, that's an opportunity for us to do professional learning with staff around those H Q I strategies, but at the same time to have that live teaching experience. And then what we do is we take that focus for whatever we decide to do for H Q I Live, and we embed that throughout the school year. So it's talked about when we look at data, it's talked about in content-level professional learning. So we're trying not to have those as two separate entities. When we talk about H Q I in terms of the instructional strategy, we're also talking about the content. So we're looking at learning progressions and how skills evolve over time. And as we do that, we're talking about the strategies that we focus on. So if we're talking about hints and extensions to students, we're looking at it from a science or a math or a social studies perspective. So throughout the school year, that's a lot of the tasks that we're doing, is we're getting really deep into the H Q I work at the content level with those specific teacher teams. And then obviously, we also know that, as Dr. Kataya mentioned in her budget presentation, we have new initiatives that come up. The literacy piece, science of reading, those legislative requirements have caused us to have to spend a great deal of time with our elementary educators this year, really honing in on the specific parts of our literacy program. So where I really want to go with this is, the time that we allocate, we have very specific intentions for whether it's looking at data, it's allowing for teacher collaboration, we call them teacher support networks in district, time for that collaboration and that planning to occur. Then we also have the content-specific time, and we have, we've tried to build out opportunities for that H Q I work throughout the school year. But to just do it one week, or as, you know, you were asking us about if we embedded it throughout the school year, would not allow us that ability to really dig deep, because there's only so much time in an afternoon after the kids get on the bus and go home.
So, thank you.
That line item also, I'm interrupting you, pardon me.
No, go ahead.
The 8111 professional learning line item has been reduced by $25,000 in the proposed budget in front of you. And that's all PD across all areas, so.
Okay.
But we're happy to provide you with more data on that.
I appreciate that, and I don't want to belabor too much time, and I want to, I want to say this as delicately and respectfully as I can. I go to professional development seminars all the time. Many of them are fantastic, many of them are not, but I have to go because I have to do certain requirements. I have heard rumblings that teachers go year after year after year because they get paid, not because it is valuable, and I just want to share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So Alderman Jenkins, we have a partner that's interested in some of our H Q I Live work, and so they've interviewed some of our teachers who have attended and some of our teachers who have not, and they asked some questions. And if I'm at liberty to share some of those data points of feedback, I'll be happy to do that when we send you costs as well.
Great, great.
So some anecdotal pieces.
Yeah.
And even in that, if I could be so vulnerable to share with you, maybe some of the negative feedback as well. Because like with any training, it may work for him, but it doesn't work for me.
Right.
So we know that that's going to be the case with any opportunity we provide teachers, whether it's H Q I Live or this mandated training on literacy. We're bringing the consultants in from out-of-state, they are trained in the package, and I'm sitting in there going, "Oh, my God, this is going to make me crazy if I stay all day." So I think that's going to be the case with all trainings, but thank you for that feedback.
Sure, sure. Just a couple of other points, and then I will, I will sit back and let other people talk. The instructional coaches have been brought up multiple times last year, they've been brought up this year. I have a hard time understanding why with a vastly different number of, a vastly different enrollment number across the schools, we are allocating four at each school. Last year, we talked about a tiered coaching model that may have been implemented, it was proposed, it wasn't implemented. I'm wondering why that recommendation was ignored. And it is, one of the line items that you have listed on here is a potential large source of savings instead of closing a school. So I really want to, want to reach into that again.
Can you explain for me the tiered coaching model?
I don't know.
What do you mean by that?
Last year, there was discussion of having a different number of coaches based on the necessity at each school. Not each school has the same number of students, so why must we have two of each of these coaches at each school? Can they float? Can they go to, those were some of the discussions that we had last year.
I'm sorry that I'm not recalling that.
Okay.
Just being honest.
That's, that's fine, and we
So the question at hand, though, is why the same number?
Yeah. I mean, if we want to have an equitable distribution here, we're arbitrarily choosing a number four. We're not allocating based on a need, necessity, there may be five necessary at one school and one or two at another school. We're arbitrarily putting four at each school, and we have different enrollment numbers and different needs at each school.
So Alderman Jenkins, you bring up actually a staffing model that some districts use and some don't.
Yeah.
So in our world, that would be really reduced to, what are our staffing model practices? And at the elementary, when, this is a model I walked into, and we just, for, I don't know, for lots of reasons, we haven't addressed or taken on, but we don't have a tiered staffing model at our elementary schools, or any of our schools, in certain areas. So, for example, we have one school counselor at each elementary school. We don't have a .5 in a smaller school and 1.5 in a larger. Sorry, I retract my statement in that we do have tiered staffing models when it comes to like specials, like music, art, library, and that's mostly because of a scheduling function on providing coverage for teachers and providing specials for children. But when it comes to other positions, school psych, social worker, counseling, like I mentioned, it's not a tiered staffing model. And that would, that would require us to invest some analysis and kind of, and look at impact, assess impact.
I think analysis is good.
Yeah.
For the past two years, it has been a discussion of, do we consider cutting down from 32 to reducing by eight? That's on this year's proposal
Yep.
again. And again, I'm looking in an effort to be efficient as well as prudent when it comes to our expenses. And
Sure.
if it means that we have four at one school and one or two are not as heavily involved, is that a necessary and an efficient and effective way of allocating our funds? Or do we need to look at that and say, "We can do better"?
So if you allow me to offer another side of that coin?
Yeah.
And I really love this dialogue, thank you. I realize that size of school is the easiest way to slice this when it comes to allocation of resources, and that's one way to look at it. But the other side is based on student need.
Agreed.
And just because a school is smaller, doesn't mean that, I'm just going to put it this way to get through this quickly, that their achievement is better.
Sure.
Therefore, needing less, fewer resources, right? So if we were just to use a staffing model that if you have 200 students, you get two coaches, if you have 400 students, you get four coaches, or you get a coach for every 100 kids, something like that, right? That would suggest a tiered staffing model. But the quantity of students does not necessarily reflect the learning needs of students in that building. So my worry about, just thinking very quickly on my feet here, is that if you were to move toward a tiered staffing model based on numbers like that, you might actually be, you may not be responsive to student needs because you're just doing formulaic allocation. So that would be one thought that comes to mind if we were to entertain a tiered staffing model such as that. But I do want to address how we got to that point, to begin with.
Before you do, can I just add one point
Yeah.
to that? And I think that's where the float model comes into place.
The what model?
Float. Because if you have a
Oh, okay.
a coach that can go from one school to another school, you are effectively using those personnel, and you're not having people sitting idly by where it's costing the district money.
Well, I wouldn't think anyone's sitting idly by.
But this is based on your possible suggestion of eliminating eight coaches.
Right, but I also have world language on there, it's not something I want to do. I also have STEM on there.
We don't want to close a school either.
I don't want to do any of it.
So, but we have to make hard decisions, and we have to make those decisions
Right.
based on what is in the best interests of our students. And that's again where I applaud the turning the lens inward, and coaches are turning the lens inward versus saying, "We're going to affect 400 children and their families and close those schools." Granted, other areas will be affected too, but that targets one very specific population of individuals in this city.
Agreed, when you look at it mathematically such as that, but I would
Costly and emotionally.
Well, I'm thinking about student learning for a minute. We've just shared that we believe that our acceleration intervention model is working, that student-centered coaching along with many other things. That's, that's not the only thing that's working, because I don't want to dismiss all the other efforts that we have put in, and that's reflected in this, in the foundational budget. But we believe we are gaining traction with what we're doing at the elementary level. And the way we got to four, and I really, I really regret ever calling these individuals coaches, because I think that is a misrepresentation of their work. Every building already had these FTEs on payroll. When I got here, there were schools with two interventionists and two coaches, like that was, those people were already on payroll. And those interventionists were reading interventionists. And I think I've shared this with you for the last two years, that an outside agency deemed our intervention model broken, ineffective. And if I stood here before you as the instructional leader of this city and continued a broken, ineffective model, I would be ineffective. We had to change the model. So what I did was I took resources we already had. I did not come and say, "I want to hire two more people to now make six people, two interventionists and four coaches." Instead, with a fiscal mind, we took what we already had and made it a better model. And it's working. I don't want to cut anything. I don't want to close a school. I don't want to cut coaches, I don't want to cut world language, STEM, none of it. But we're here together, and the board, and I, and our team, if we walk back with a 1.3 reduction to our request, then we will do the very best we can not to hurt kids. But 1.3 is deep.
It is.
We commit to that.
And, again, there are multiple options
There are.
on here. I would love the opportunity to sit down with you and go over some of my thoughts, that doesn't need to be done tonight. And I think that the, the real, I'll close with this. I think that there really needs to be a team-type of approach across this city on all levels. We don't just have our taxes that go to school, it has to go to public safety. We don't just have it go to school in public safety, it has to go to public works. And year after year, it seems that the largest increase in ask comes from the Board of Education. 55 cents or more on every dollar of our taxpayers' earnings are going into the Board of Education. And I, I really think that we have to do a real deep dive at how we can manage those across the board, especially when we need to come in as flat as we possibly can, and 4.87 isn't, isn't flat. So I, again, I thank you for taking my questions. I will send those requests with regard to things that I would like to follow up with before we vote, and I would love to
Maybe we could find some time to meet prior to
Yes, and I was just going to say, I would love to find some time offline to
We'd enjoy that, thank you.
sit down. Thank you.
Any information you get from that, you need to share it with the rest of the Alderman, Alderman Jenkins. Alderman Jenkins, when you get any of the information that you're asking for, and you get the results answering your questions, to come back and share it with us.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to email everyone the information. Okay?
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I meant.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Mulrennan.
Thank you, Chairman Vitra, through you, to Dr. Kataya. Dr. Kataya, could you speak relative to what other you are aware of as far as other school districts' requests on their budget?
If you'll give me a moment. So if the city Wi-Fi lets us access, what is this, Mayor? Come on. It was planned, did you hear that? So we just have a smattering of examples. And I'm looking at now two devices, and I just want to make sure we're giving you...
Seriously?
Yeah, I have it. So we have this alphabetically, but also, we call, we have this thing called a D E R G. Alderman Mulrennan, if you know, it's a district-regional group, and so the state finance project organizes school districts by a plethora of demographics numbers. And we are categorized as a D E R G D, as in David, A being the wealthiest school districts, and I being districts and I being, uh, the least wealthy. And we're considered a D on that scale. So is it okay if I just give you some D? Because I think it would be unfair for us to give you Greenwich's increase, right? So in the Derg D world, um, superintendent requests of, um, Berlin, 7.4, Branford, 6.8, Branford's Board of Ed passed a 5.8, Clinton, 6.72, Cromwell, 5.81, East Hampton, 7.3, East Lime, 699, um, New Milford, 393, Newington, 686, North Haven, 10.65, Shelton, 4.98, Suddington, 6.6, Stonington, 6.66, God, that's a bad number, Wallingford, 3.86, and Waterford, 6.68. Those are all the Ds I have.
Uh, thank you. I think that's what I was kind of anticipating that, again, we know that this is a maintenance budget, that there's no new initiatives in here, that the percentage increase is very lean and you certainly shared a great range showing that the majority are above. There's some lower, granted, but most of those numbers you read off in the same regional category were greater than the request in front of us. Thank you, Dr. Kataya.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. Within the city budget, if a department does not spend all the money that was given them, that excess money that they didn't spend goes back into the city's, uh, general fund. Now with the Board of Education, I'm not aware of how that process works to where if you did not spend all the money that you were granted from the budget, what happens to that unspent money on the Board of Education? Where does it go?
So that money would be returned to the city?
Say again?
The money would be returned to the city.
So whatever you don't spend comes back to the city?
Yes.
But that never happened.
Peter, is that, have we ever gotten a refund back from the Board of Education?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Bevan, I, I do not recall that ever happening.
Never happened.
Uh, it's, it's technically, it's possible, but I, to my knowledge in my tenure and even prior to my tenure, I don't recall that ever happening where the Board of Ed returns money to the city. It's very, very rare.
We don't have surpluses.
We don't have, yeah, we don't have.
Now, um, are we thinking about non-lapsing?
No, I'm talking about whatever money from the budget that you did not spend, um, for whatever reason, what happens to, I guess, I guess from what I'm hearing is that whatever money the budget is, you make sure that you spend every dollar of that and there's no, nothing left.
No, so the only time I remember us not being able to spend our money was in, um, June of 2020 because we went to, um, overnight virtual school and we were unable, I'm looking over, Mr. Dearsey, um, we were unable to, um, utilize all of the allocation that we were provided. So, uh, we engaged in, I'm going to use the wrong words, a one-time non-lapsing fund? All right, I got it right. Um, and there are a lot of very specific rules around that, that it can't be more than 2% of your total allocation and it must be, uh, approved now by the Board of Ed. At one time it was Board of Alderman?
Board of Finance.
Board of Finance. I should really just hand the microphone to you.
So I think there's a couple of pieces at play here. Um, so it's my understanding that if there was excess money at the end of the year, it would be turned over. As an aside to that, um, there is a thing called a non-lapsing account that was established back in, um, July of 2010. And at that point, when it was established, you were allowed to set aside 1% of the general operating budget into an account that can carry over to the next year with specific guidance on what you were going to spend it on and the reasons why you need to carry that over. Throughout the years, that legislation has changed and, um, like in 2019, that 1% changed to 2%. Uh, just most recently this past summer, uh, on July 1st of 2024, uh, the approval process of that shifted a little bit from the Board of Finance being able to, needing to approve that to our Board of Education being able to approve that. So that would be 2% of the operating budget set aside. Uh, to answer your previous question, I think, uh, you may be referring to in previous budget cycles from years ago when there may have been, uh, what we would call a surplus at the end of the year. If that occurred, when that occurred, and that's not something that we're seeing in these kind of times lately, but when that occurred, what we did at that point was we then dedicated that money to our buildings and ground projects. So we would tell Mr. Bradbury, here's, you know, what kind of buildings and ground projects do you have that are going to enhance our, our, you know, our operation here? And he would prioritize that by school and by need and safety and security always takes, uh, the number one need of that. So that money would then be primarily allocated to something along those lines, if that makes sense. And special education
Always runs over.
Always runs over. So I think there's, especially in these recent years, uh, some of our accounts, and you could see this in the presentation that we did on the quarterly budget report, you'll see a number of accounts that are in deficit right now. Uh, those are all ones that are primary related to student needs. You'll see things that are like legal services. You'll see them in special ed, transportation and tuition. You'll see them in, uh, some of our hourly, uh, paraprofessionals that are needed for some of our students with needs and things that are based on the PPT process. Uh, so everything seems to kind of relate back to our students' needs right now, which are causing some of these deficits. I hope that answers the question that you were looking for.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Beatty.
Thank you, Chairperson Vitro through you to the panel. I first like to make a little commentary. Thank you for all the efforts and the work to the Board of Ed, to the research that goes into it and the presentation. Because first and foremost, this budget process is an educational one. And I'm thinking, uh, first and foremost, I too enjoy the dialogue when we learn, but some of the dialogue was repetitive and redundant from what we learned other years. This is my fifth term, so I've been quiet up to now, but that's because I've attended the forums, I've been in touch with the Board of Ed, tried to learn my own professional background, et cetera, et cetera. And I do know that when I first heard, this is not the first go around with the Board of Finance and with the question of closing schools, when I first heard about the closing of Harborside a few years ago, when there was a serious concern, I, uh, went with suspicion to find out why. It seemed like that was an easy approach, a truncated approach to chop off from budget. And I really went with that lens. And I listened and I learned. I even thought that maybe it was a political stance, an incendiary one. Parents got involved. They didn't want the school closed, et cetera. I found that not to be true. There is no low-hanging fruit, to use a 1990s economics phrase. Too bad we can't find $750,000 for the, uh, ground, groundskeeping every year and make it easy. There was a lot of deliberation that went into this. And when I came about, I did a complete reversal in my thinking. I originally went in and thought, and I know this from writing, that it's harder to edit something and not just chop it off and change the whole thing than it is to develop something new. So I was really worried about just the closing of the schools and the chopping. I came away much more worried that there would be a carving out across the board, 10% cut here across the mean. And I even wrote about it two years ago, the relentless drive toward the mean, meaning toward mediocrity, flat budgeting, what that does to visioning, visioning. We, and plus we've heard, I thought it was particularly courageous last year when Dr. Kataya stood here at risk of, uh, challenging the record of her very capable and well-like predecessor, that the intervention program that we were doing for the kids that we ourselves had identified as not performing wasn't working and it needed to be changed. That's something. That's how budgeting is an educational process. We learned that. And that's how I changed my mind about the, the coach learners and all that opposition. But we had a lot of dialogue about that last year. So the second one that comes around, um, as a redundant theme that I think maybe we have to begin to be open to some of the answers, um, uh, well, number one, the low-hanging fruit, um, oh, is that we can't contest spending once it is allocated. That's just a given. Once the money goes to the Board of Education, we leave it to the professionals and the process and the Board of Ed in consultation with the professionals and the superintendent of schools to allocate that money. So we've been educated to that. And the third one is the professional development. And this I'm going to use my own background in public higher ed. Professional development is always worth it. The payback is always good for the system or the school or the university in very hidden ways. And in the last two decades, there's been a revolution in how we use technology to improve learning and all teachers need that all the time, embedded and separate. Now, in my profession, continuing ed, as Alderman Jenkins alluded to, is a requirement for licensure as it is in many professions, but it's supported, the payment of it is supported in, in medicine, nursing, audiology, all those professions, chiropractor. It's supported in some ways by salary. With teachers, they have a contract, so they're off and they're not being paid. So that's the reason for a stipend. It sounds, it's always looked on as with suspicion. Why do you have to pay them? Because the way they enact their profession is different. And so I really want us to, to think about it. And then I had one other, um, oh, that just, I, I learned what would have been across my five terms if we had had, um, just a 2%, 5%, 7% cut across the board and all things, what wouldn't we have now in 225, uh, that wasn't in existence in 215? And those things are significant in the school system.
Any more questions for the Board of Education? Alderman, Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. Sean, that, that non-lapsing fund, how much is in that at this point?
So I believe there's approximately $150,000 that's, uh, from a previous, so let me just take it back to the history. We have utilized that non-lapsing account, uh, three times since the inception of it back in 2011. One time was in 2012 for approximately, I think it was like 400, $450,000 and that was for specifically, so the non-lapsing account that calls out specific actual things that you're going to carry that money over for. So back in 2012, that money, $450,000 of it, was called out specifically for the athletic fields, uh, at law and foreign. Then in 2014, 15, there was some money set aside in the non-lapsing account at that time, which was dedicated to the reconfiguration of the schools. I think if you remember back to that time, I think that's, I believe that's when we went from K2, 3, 5 back to K5. So there was money set aside, uh, for that, uh, reconfiguration process. And then most recently, at the end of COVID, at that March 2020, was that the year of COVID? Okay, March 2020, when the students were, uh, home for the remainder of the year, there was some money that was left over from that operating budget, which we utilized the non-lapsing account again, um, in anticipation of using that money to offset some of the costs of COVID-related expenses that would occur in the following year. Um, so I believe, uh, and the approximate number is 150,000. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but it would have to go towards some of those items that we called it out for back then. So we can't just spend that $150,000 for X when we've called it out for Y.
Okay, so the last time that we put any money into that account was when?
2020.
2020. Thank you.
And that was a million dollars at that point. And that was the COVID money that we set aside and that money was used, uh, that following year for COVID-related expenses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you to, uh, Dr. Kataya. I think, uh, well, first, thank you so much for, um, the presentation. Um, I just have a clarifying question about Dergs. I think last year we, we talked about how they're not really official or officially used anymore. Um, I'm just curious to what extent do we maybe still use Dergs to judge ourselves or budgeting process? Uh, can you clarify for that?
So the State Department of Education, uh, do not officially revise, uh, the Derg. So that's why I cited the Connecticut Finance Project, I think is, is that correct?
Yeah, it looks like it's the school state finance project. At least that's what.
That's, uh, who is, that's the body in the state of Connecticut that is now doing that. Um, I, we don't really use Dergs anymore. It's not a practice, uh, in our world any longer. It, I think at one time when, uh, the CMTs are around, uh, and those previous state commissioners use Dergs much more to sift and sort districts. Um, but other than, um, the Connecticut State Finance Project using it, I don't believe that it's in our practice any longer. Alderman Fowler.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for the Board of Ed? Alderman Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. More comments than questions. Um, as, uh, first of all, thank you for the presentation. You guys always do a great job. Um, I do spend the time to look through the back and so I'm not asking questions that I already know the answer to. Um, but I did want to just make a comment because I've heard, uh, both at the public hearing and even tonight, uh, that I have to take exception with, uh, comments that were made that all Republicans, um, dislike education and won't support education. So I just take exception with that. I'm not going to speak for anyone else, but I'll speak for myself, that I'm, I don't want to involve what may be going on nationally with the local level. All these people here volunteer their time to serve this city and so that's how I approach these things. And I bring, I think maybe a unique perspective to this because, um, I've served on the Board of Education for, I don't know, eight or nine years, whatever it was, and I've also served on the Board of Finance. So I bring a unique perspective in how people are thinking about, you know, and how they really come to the decisions they're making. So I, I just don't want to lump the Board of Finance, that there are these people who just are, are just, you know, looking at a budget and don't care about anything else. That's not true. And the Board of Education, I know, puts a ton of time into things. And I know the, that what goes through all the decisions that need to be made. And I know it's hard to sometimes budget, but I also know that, um, there is resources within that budget as well that sometimes can be used. So I guess just, just my comments are more is I really enjoy being able to have these discussions and try to work together and come up with some, some answers and some solutions that will benefit everyone. Thank you.
Any more, Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, through you to the, to the panel, Dr. Kataya first. Um, you know, I think you do a very good job of giving these presentations and answering our questions. I have one small piece of advice for you. I think you should incorporate the phrase AKA or formerly known as when you talk about new things. So when you talk about coaches, they are formerly known as interventionists, or when you talk about HQI, I mean, I remember that as teacher development. And I remember from my time on the Board of Education that there were my time on the Board of Education, that there were summer sessions for teacher development. So these things were always there. You've given them new names and new branding, which I think is good because it, it shows how you intend to use, utilize these, these resources, but I think just when you're talking this part, just maybe just keep that like AKA or formerly known as language in there, and then people will, will know that these are not new, new or brand new things, they're just being looked at and talked about in a different way. I want to ask, my second question or comment is, I looked at the list of potential cuts that the, that you and the Board of Ed came up with, and I know that Harborside is on the table, and I know there's a number of other potential cuts on the table. And what I read when I look at that document, it's very factual, but if you could talk about what it would kind of mean to the school system, right? So we're talking about either, it was said earlier, closing Harborside, you know, disproportionately impacts and disrupts the lives of 400 students. Some of the other cuts on that list, I think, disrupt learning across the district, and my main thing I want to know is how it would impact the progress that we've made if we go back to your collective bright spots slide, how that could be impacted if the 1.3 million or a portion of it is not restored? Because that could be what we're looking at, so I want to know what that means for this board when we take votes.
Alderman Federico, would you give me permission to address your first comment first?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. For those of us who have good memories in the room, my presentation to you last year included a slide that was entitled Building on a Legacy of Excellence, Progress, and Achievement, and I did a 23, a 20-year look back, and, you know, there's nothing really special about HQI, but I think it's pretty darn special. It's both, right? But in 2005, that superintendent was calling it Effective Instructional Strategies, and that was on that slide, if you go back to that in 2005. So my point is, like, what we're doing today, like, I'm just taking up space in that, in this point of time here, and I'm just trying to grow on the excellence that has come before me. Like, I'm, I'm standing on the, the shoulders of giants, right? So, yeah, I call it HQI because we're trying to refresh, renew, and move us forward, but in 2005, it was called Effective Instructional Strategies. In 2009, we were talking about unique academic programming for students. In 2012, that superintendent was talking about rigorous quality education. In 2014, that superintendent was talking about instructional core. And one day, there will be a superintendent sitting here saying, and in 2024, someone was calling it HQI. It's just our definition of good practice. You, a profession is defined by a defined practice. That, that's what makes a profession different than non-professions, right? So we're, we just, we're creating synergy around a vision of improved practice. That's just the bottom line of that. It's, it's not special, but it's special. So thank you for reminding me. I went immediately to that slide from last year and noticed that this is a 20-year-old initiative. There's nothing new, fancy and shiny about it. It's just a really old idea that we should be defining our practice in a profession. So thank you.
And thank you for the refresher.
Okay.
Do you want me to repeat my second question?
No, I'm just giving myself a moment to think.
Take your time.
I was just thinking about Alderman Beatty's comment about when do we stop talking about some things? And I would tell you, our board is fully behind our improving teaching and learning through HQI. So, moving on to your comment, though, thank you. So factually, numerically, none of these options are anything we want to do. And the, the, the fact that our board is talking about the possibility of consolidating, retiring, and building new demonstrates that there's a need for that. Our buildings are aging. The data that we've pulled based on enrollment and facility needs and programming dreams have proven that we have to do something about our facilities. So some people might be saying, well, why are we worried about closing Harborside right now? Because that may happen anyway. It's because if you're going to consolidate or retire, schools should be done thoughtfully and planfully because we're talking about children. So the preferred route would be to do it as part of a plan that engages stakeholders and not, as Alderman Jenkins is saying, is immediately, like, that's like kind of what I'm getting, like, we, we're on the same page there, right? So the ba-boom, three months, let's go, albeit this community has experienced that already. And nobody wants to repeat that part of history. So the result might be that we're closing schools in the future, like, that's not my business, that's their decision, but that, that is something that we're preparing for, right? Or would be if that is their decision. So the impact is that, I'm going to use this word again tonight, it's jarring, right? It's whoa, 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 wait a minute, like, we, we have so much to prepare, and the transition just feels abrupt, right? It's like mom and dad coming home and saying, in April, we're moving in September, boys and girls, like, what? So that is the emotional impact of that, that I think if you could work with people shoulder to shoulder and say, hey, this is what our facility plan is going to be, that you can rally a group and dream on new facilities, like, isn't that going to be cool when we can dream about working with architects and, and building new or expanding or program facility-wise, right? So that's the bricks and mortar impact, Alderman Federico. I, I have always been of a mindset that programming innovation is going to require a resource, one, analysis and reallocation. So just like with the interventionist and the coach, we didn't say we have to add more people, we're just going to reinvent, we're going to reimagine. So new programming could be a reimagination of how we use the resources we already have, or new programming could mean we have to add people, i.e. world language teachers. We make, we're making progress, like, that's a pretty cool characteristic, not just cool, sorry, I don't mean, that sounded unprofessional. That is a highly effective characteristic of a school district. And when we first started it, I think we were one of nine school districts that offered a world language at the elementary school. So that is one innovation, but it also is a career preparedness move. So if we were to, let's say, remove that, I feel like we're rolling back on some progress our school district is making. And when I, I say that, we can't just say coaching is working, that's the magic silver bullet, right? It's all these pieces, like, there is research in the area of that if you expose children at an early age to a, a language that isn't their native language, and you provide them with experience with instrumental music, and you provide them with enriching, exciting, engaging, inquiry-based learning, parentheses, HQI, all of that is what contributes to the collective bright spots. We didn't teach the test to get those improvements. We did all of that. So what does pulling the plug on some of our, our initiatives mean? It, it has the impact on those bright spots, right? So we believe that with the board, if this reduction sticks, that, and that's why we organized the chart the way we did, elementary, middle, high district, that the entire system will need to be considered when it comes to impact. So we can't just gut the elementary programs. We can't take the coaches, the world language, and the STEM and be done with it. We, I, I'm, I'm encouraging the board to take a look at the entire system, the district, and what's happening there, and elementary, middle, and high. So the reduction actually has, will, not has, but will, impact everybody, not just, let's say, if it's closing Harborside, the 400 kids there. The reduction, if not closing a school, has an impact on the entire system. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
And how would that impact the progress that we saw on the collective bright spots?
I think you know that answer.
I know. Okay, thank you. So, I mean, from everything you've said, you know, I, I don't, I fully agree that we shouldn't close a school in, in rapid fashion. I fully agree that we shouldn't hurt the programs. I believe that we should restore some, if not all, of the funds, you know, the number to be determined, but I, I would be supportive of that. I want to speak to what I consider tonight to be the elephant in the room. We had about 30 speakers last week asking us to restore the 1.3 million funding reduced by the Board of Finance. Several of them noted that the mayor campaigned on saving schools. Many of my constituents have asked me, what's the mayor's position? And Mr. Marriott, if you could come forward from the, from the back of the room there. I've explained to them that you don't have a vote, but they've asked me, you know, what, what is his opinion? These parents are hoping desperately that you can help save the schools by supporting, increasing or restoring the funding and influencing the board. So do you believe the funding, some, the funding or some of the funding should be restored to the Board of Ed's request in mail?
Well, thank you for the question, and through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico. I am supportive of keeping Harborside open, and I've conveyed that to the administration. I don't think that that's the best course of action at this point, but we are so early in this process, and I hope that there is a middle ground. I think we need to start working together as a team. We need first to define this long-range plan so our buildings and our schools aren't put in jeopardy due, due to lack of funding. So I would just leave it at that, and I do not have a vote, but I do support keeping Harborside open. Thank you.
Do you support increasing the funding at all?
Well, it's interesting that you're asking me that question.
Let me phrase it correctly.
Well, I want to ask you a question, because I saw you holding a sign that says lower taxes in front of the tax office. So are you in support of lowering taxes?
Okay, so to be 100% clear, I didn't have the lower taxes sign, but someone next to me did. I had, I had a sign that says.
I beg to differ.
I had a sign that said a stronger.
And that was on social media, because you've indicated that you follow social media. So are you in favor of lowering taxes?
But let me be clear, taxes have been raised last year more because of increases in the city department's spending than because of the Board of Education's spending.
So are you in favor of lowering taxes this budget cycle? Because that's what you're campaigning on.
No, I am not saying lower, when you say lower, do you mean lower, like, reducing from last year?
Let me leave it at this, I'm just to guess at the meeting, there's no other mayor that's actually participated in this process when the Board of Ed comes before the Board of Alderman, but I'm here in good faith.
So I'm asking the question because when you campaigned.
And I, I campaigned on helping to keep Harborside open, and that's what I did, by making the motion to put the full reimbursement back with the contingency of forming a long-range plan, which Dr. Kataya and this administration and this panel have done, and we are in the process of working through that. I do not want to see Harborside school closed, absolutely not. Thank you.
Okay. So I asked the question because your campaign sign said save our schools above that.
That was, I just explained that, Alderman Federico, I know that you're new at this, but you have to remember how we got here. So let's just continue on and not waste any more time with this type of dialogue. If you want to meet me in my office and make an appointment, I'd be happy to sit down with you and explain how we got here.
I, I was just asking, I've been asked, does the mayor support restoring funding? So I was just asking the question on behalf of my constituents.
Well, my constituents are the whole city, and I believe I've answered your question more than once. Thank you.
Is there any more questions pertaining to the Board of Education budget? Alderman Marin.
If I just may speak as well, my constituents have been asking the same thing, and I do not believe you answered Alderman Federico's question, which is, do you support putting funds back into the Board of Education budget? Yes or no?
That's up to the body of the Board of Alderman to decide. We're not at the budget vote at this point.
I'm not, I'm not asking for a vote, I'm asking your position, your position as an individual, do you support the funds going back to the Board of Education? Yes or no? That's the question.
Point of procedure, Administrator Chairman, are we here to quiz the mayor? I was just about ready to say it again. Let's just keep the questions to the Board of Education panel that's here tonight for the budget. Is there any more questions pertaining to the Board of Education budget?
Mr. Richard.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do, there've been some discussions here tonight I'd like to ask for some more clarity on. That, that bus contract, the 19.75%, that does kind of jump out. Was that contract put out to a public bid, to an RFP? Alderman Smith, no, it was not.
How come? Why, why was it not put out to an RFP?
Sure, yeah, I think I went through some of those points from the previous question, but I'm certainly happy to reillustrate them. So what we did was, we took a look at a comparative analysis of all the other districts that provided us with information on what they were currently paying, and we looked where we fell within that, within that range of values. We were currently at the very bottom of that range. And then we looked at the proposal that was brought to us by our transportation contract that we had, that we've had since 2005, and we saw that the value was still underneath the average. Now, to answer your question about the RFP, and this was something that was.
I did hear your answer before. I was asking, did it go out to RFP? The answer is no, and the follow-up was going to be, why not? Not because you did all these other things. I thought Milford had an ordinance that said we had to send out contracts to RFP.
Not if the board votes to approve to waive that process.
You voted to waive the RFP process on a 19.75% increase?
Yes, and if you look at the risk of going out to an actual RFP for that, which was the point that I was going to be making to you there, the risk of that would be that it may come in higher, and very likely so come in higher, so it could actually be more, based on, based on the market analysis.
So, so you decided not to go to our, out to RFP on a 19.75? Okay. I think that's bad policy. I hope you never do that kind of thing again. I think you ought to be putting all these things out to RFP, and this thing, you know, you're letting some contractor spook you into thinking you can't go out? Don't, don't be scared, go out to the market. There were people that will be, anyway, that's just my thought on it. I think you made a mistake there, that's bad practice, and you ought not do it again, from my perspective. I wanted to ask you as well about this HQI stuff. I, I'm just trying to come to grips with that. These expensive programs that are all over this thing, how do you, how would we, the Board of Alderman, or Ann Alderman, or the citizens of Milford, how would they measure this success of HQI? Is there a metric, something we can look at?
Yes, the collective bright spots, the slide on that.
The collective bright spots? That's, that's not, that's not an objective metric of HQI. You're suggesting your collective bright spots are analytically shown to tie out the HQI?
No, Alderman Smith, as I've explained throughout the evening, that HQI is simply a definition of high effective practice. It is a definition, a common standardized definition of what works in classrooms. Simply that. If it's not HQI, a characteristic of an effective school district is to define what good teaching should look like.
is to define what good teaching should look like. That is the bottom line of that.
I'm going to take that as you don't have any hard metrics we can look at for the success or failure of H Q I.
Great, that's the answer, right.
Yeah, there is no.
Correct.
So look, since you have no metrics for it, I would like to recommend to you, as you go through this very interesting list that you put together. It is an interesting list. You add pausing H Q I for a year for savings. If you have to try to come up with savings, pause it for a year. It's an expensive program. You have to pay a lot of people to go to it. You can't measure whether it's a success or not. Pause it for a year if you're under the hammer. That would be a suggestion from my side. The same question, and I assume it's going to be the same answer for all these other professional development days. There's no hard measurement metric that we can look at for the success or failure of these professional development days? Is that right?
The four professional development days?
Yes.
We do not provide an assessment to teachers when they walk out of training. No.
Okay, so there's no metric for that, too. I would suggest the same thing for that one. That you give, in a year when you're looking for savings, think about pausing that and saving everybody the money. Let the teachers teach. This menu, I call it, of suggestions where you might go to try to fill the gap that was created by the Finance Board, I just added it all up. There's $6.3 million in there, and some of it makes for very interesting and good reading. So you all put together a very interesting set of suggestions there. I suggest that you, you know, implement, go in here and implement in part, if not in whole, all of them, with the exception of closing the middle school. I think you've heard pretty well from this board, and you've heard from the mayor. In fact, I've heard from everybody in the city. There's nobody in the city, except you, that have put down a suggestion for closing a school. You are the only ones in the entire city of Milford who have ever put down on paper or suggested since the Finance Board did its work. You are the only ones who suggested closing a school. I suggest you rethink your suggestions. The city doesn't want it. This board doesn't want it. The mayor doesn't want it. And you're the only ones, the only ones, who have written down that suggestion. It's another bad idea that you've got that you presented here tonight? And I think you ought to take that back to your board. Bad idea? Don't do it. With regard to these increases that you've got here tonight before us, 4.87%, that is an outrage. That is an outrage. At 4.87%, the Board of Ed budget will double in 14 years. That is unsustainable. And the idea that a 3.7% increase is somehow going to devastate the... That's a one, I did the arithmetic here. That's a 1.13% decrease in the increase. 1.13%. You're telling me in a $115 million budget, you can't go in and get a 1% savings across the board? I don't buy it. Take that back to your board. Find a way to do it that doesn't include harmful things to curriculum or closing schools. 1% on $115 million? You've got to be kidding me. Let me ask one thing over here. You've got this new title here for Supervisor of Equity and Engagement. It used to be the old D E I, right? Is there a written explanation for what that day-to-day job responsibilities are for that office?
Yes.
Can we get that?
Sure.
And I'd like to suggest, if it isn't already, it's a little hard to tell from here because we've got some instructional people in here looking for elimination. That ought to be, that ought to be position number one to get rid of, rather than scaring people about closing a school. Get rid of that D E I. I don't even know what that was doing in our budget to begin with. And that's all I got. Oh, no, I got one more thing. I understand that you guys have padded cells in your schools where you throw students every now and again. Solitary confinement rooms. What in the world? I'd never heard of such a thing. Do you really have solitary confinement rooms sprinkled throughout our school system where you put students?
Mr. Chair, I don't understand how that is relevant to the budget discussion this evening.
How much are we spending on these things? You have to keep these rooms together. You've got to keep them padded. You've got to keep their lock... How much do we spend?
Thank you for your feedback, Alderman Smith.
How much do we spend on the padded cells? How much do we spend? We're here for your budget.
I don't have that figure this evening.
Can you get that figure for me?
It's not part of the annual budget.
It's not part of the annual budget?
Mr. Chair, is this part of the discussion?
Yes, I'm asking how much the padded cells cost.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alderman, let me talk, all right? Keep your questions to the board in a civil manner.
Okay. How much do the padded cells cost?
They are not padded cells, first of all. If you'd like to have a discussion about the use of areas for students with special needs, that's a different discussion and not part of the budget. I really resent you calling them padded cells.
Well, that's what they are. I'll tell you what.
Mr. Chair, I'm not going to engage in this dialogue. Okay?
Can I get a tour of these, whatever you call them? Can I get a tour of these, whatever you call them, cells? Is that a no? You won't let us see them?
I'm not engaging in this dialogue with you, Alderman Smith. I am here for the purpose of discussing the proposed 2526 budget. Mr. Chair, I would appreciate if you intervene at this time.
Any more questions for the Board of Education?
Yes, through you, Alderman Smith mentioned D E I.
Excuse me, can you say that louder, please?
What was I? Excuse me, excuse me. I have the floor. D E I stands for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Alderman Smith just called me a coward. Is this what, is this what we have now devolved to?
Alderman Smith, sit down.
Yes.
So now we're going to call each other cowards? Is this the professional environment that I get to work in?
Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is D E I. I don't know what's wrong with Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to recess until Monday, April 21, 2025, at 7 o'clock.
Second.
We have a motion to recess and a second. All in favor? We're in recess.